Back to order. Amy, could you please leave some questions?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special presentation. Scott, drink? Hi, Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for giving me a couple of extra minutes today. I wanted to kind of share some exciting visitor research that we have, that we completed back this winter and spring. We do this study, it's a visitor perception study that we do once every five years, so we have some good benchmark data to use. We actually, this year, added some other components in finding out where visitors were coming from that would really help us kind of efficiently and effectively use our regional marketing dollars. So with that, you know, I've learned long ago to kind of use your best... There you go. This first one is probably the best that I have. So I've learned in doing these research presentations, kind of start out with the best you have. This is as good as it gets. We asked visitors how likely they would be to take another trip to Dublin. Ninety-three percent said very likely. And ninety-eight percent said likely, very likely or somewhat likely. So it's about as good as it gets in terms of visitors coming to the city. And very unlikely, zero percent. So that's extremely positive with that. This is always a fun graphic, you know, in terms of asking people what their perceptions of Dublin are. Obviously, Irish is very high, festival, Columbus Zoo. Something that's very low is down here, and I'll get to that in a moment, is Columbus and suburb, which we did this study 10 years ago, and that was very big. So I'll get to that in a minute on how we've kind of moved the needle with that as well. Perception in terms of, based on visitor perceptions, how would you rate the following aspects? General appearance, very positive. Anything over 4.25 is very good. All these are over 4.25 as well. So attractions, dining and such, you know, trending very well as well. Overall perception, again, Irish-inspired, it's very high, fun place to be affluent and so forth. You know, I think the whole Irish thing, you've heard me say this for years, that obviously it's the mechanism or the brand that we've used to sell the city of Dublin, but no means is that the only thing we're selling as part of Dublin. It gives us a competitive advantage to get people here. Once they're here, then we can sell the great things that we have in our city that aren't necessarily Irish as well. We asked first-time visitors several questions. One question was, for the first-time visitor, did your perception change positive or negative way once you visited Dublin? Again, a home run here. Ninety-six percent said their perceptions were positively changed once they visit our town. So we're exceeding visitor expectations once they come to the city of Dublin. In terms of why their perceptions changed, safe, the people, infrastructure and some other great things. You know, it's interesting, if you see that infrastructure up there, you know, this report was probably 300 to 400 pages, and I looked long and hard. Sometimes in research, it's the things that aren't said are more telling than things that aren't said. And I cannot find one negative comment about infrastructure, about 270/33, about roundabouts. And this was, the survey was done last winter, this spring. So, you know, I think it says a lot to your staff, to community relations, to engineering, on all the information we did preceding that information, getting their visitors' information, getting our hotels' information, that we didn't ever heard one comment from a visitor perspective on what was going on here in the city. This in terms of where visitors are coming from. This is a little washed out, you can use your imagination, but this is the state of Ohio right here. This is the I-71 corridor right here. So Cleveland and Akron are very heavy in terms of where our visitors come from. Cincinnati, not a surprise. But our out-of-state markets, and that's the reason we really wanted to kind of do this study, to see where our potential key out-of-state markets were. Pittsburgh, very high, Detroit, Fort Wayne, Indianapolis, Charleston, Huntington. So those are really the key markets that our visitors are coming from. Visitor patterns, not a surprise. People are driving here, for the most part, 93 percent. Only a few are flying here, for the most part. This is a little busy, but I think it's good data because it gives you comparison to where we stood in 2001 versus 2016, the current data. The red represents 16. You can kind of see, again, the Irish inspired, how we moved the needle tremendously in the last five years. Again, a fun place to be affluent, family-oriented, all good stuff here with perception-wise. This metric is one of my favorite because in our world, you know, when we all take vacations, the biggest key we use is friends and relatives, colleagues and such. That's why Yelp, TripAdvisor, those websites and other social medias are so influential right now. This basically asks, from a scale of 1 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend traveling to Dublin? And you can see how we scored 9.08. And the folks that did this North Star Strategies in Nashville said that this is one of the highest numbers they've ever seen. Now, I know we were painting them, but I don't think they would have lied to me.
[laughter]
But they said this was one of the very highs. You can kind of see how we compare to the U.S. Well above the U.S. average is 7.66. And even back in 2001, we've trended up compared to where we were in 2001. The same thing, suburban destinations. Again, we're far outpacing suburban destinations across the nation, 9.08 compared to 7.55. And then Midwest destinations. This isn't just small, this is, you know, Chicago, Milwaukee, still far outpacing. That's very good news for us in terms of what advocates are out there selling our city on our behalf. Experiential-wise, you know, experience ranking, again, from 1 to 10, we've moved the needle a little bit. Again, anything over 8 is incredible, and we're almost nearing the 9 mark as well. One thing that's important to us is our advertising. So we really ask people in terms of advertising, have you seen our advertising? You can kind of see how we've moved the needle a little bit. Red is 2016, blue is 11, so we moved it 12 percent. But, you know, it's great if they can see if it's actually effective or not. You can kind of see here, in terms of if you've been influenced or not, 60 percent have said yes compared to 45 percent back in 2011. And I think even more telling is, back in 2011, 45 percent said no, and only 18 percent said it did not influence them in 2016 as well. Again, a couple of big slides here in terms of 10-year comparisons. You know, our rate in terms of perception changed only 7 percent, which isn't horrible, but just compared to where we are now, 37 percent. So we've all excused that perception in a positive way, almost 30 percent over the last 10 years. And again, the positive or negative, again, you know, 60, we would have been real happy with 67 percent in 2006, but look where we are in 2016. I showed that slide earlier. You know, 96 percent of people think it's a positive perception once they come to the city of Dublin. This is the last one I have for you, and I think this is something that I want to say delicately because I don't want to offend anyone, but I think when we first did this study in 2006, the number-one perception phrase that we got from our visitors were we were suburb of Columbus. And Columbus is a great partner, but as a resident, as a businessperson here, you know, I don't really want to be a suburb. I think we have our own identity here in Dublin, a lot of uniqueness, more than just being a suburb. So you can see where we are in 2006, and I think if you see the last two years. And don't get caught up in 1, 2, 3, they're all marginal best, you know, how close they are. But, you know, now we're Irish-inspired, we're family-oriented, we're upscale, we're fun. And obviously, we're always going to be a suburb of Columbus, but I think that's trended lower than we have in the past. So that's a lot, the research as well. I think it's all good. We're going to use a lot of that data to kind of move forward. The last thing I wanted to kind of touch base and kind of give you guys update on is our sales and marketing results over the past few months. We came to you back in March and presented kind of our strategic position, our strategic plan on how we were going to use those increased funding that you have allocated to us back in the fall. And I wanted to kind of report to you exactly where we stood with those promises and those commitments to all of you. And in your packet is that memo. I'm not going to go in detail with it, but I just want to kind of highlight a couple things with that. Obviously, what we do, we're a sales and marketing organization. So those are the two major components that we use. Our sales force, we really felt we needed to increase it for the first time. We had not increased staff since 2001, so we hired our first-ever national sales manager. And Pat King is right there, wife Pat. We hit a home run bringing her. She has over 40 years of experience coming to the Bureau. And the last 19 years, she's been the Director of Sales and Marketing at the Marriott Northwest here in Dublin. So to say there was not much of a learning curve is an understatement. So she's took the ground running already, and just two months, she's already generated 21 qualified leads for us as well. So that's going to be new business for us that we had not been able to get in the future. The other element we're doing in terms of sales is we're going to new business shows. We're going to be able to meet with meeting planners, with trade show folks, with sports organizers, face-to-face, more than we ever have before, to try to talk them into sell Dublin, make sure they bring their event here to the city of Dublin. The other component is marketing, of course, and we've been able to, for the first time ever, do a regional marketing campaign using the data that you saw there of targeting Pittsburgh, Detroit, Indianapolis, Charleston, Huntington and Fort Wayne. And obviously, it's a tourist message that we're using, but Dublin is being saturated in those markets, albeit it's a tourist message, but it's still, you know, people that may be future residents here, business owners, they're hearing about the city of Dublin in these markets. And we're using the So Dublin campaign. That's a campaign that we've kind of showed a couple of years, or last year or so with the videos. It's a campaign really created by the city, the residents of Dublin. We have 14 to 15 videos right now. So we're using that video. We've promoted the video through TripAdvisor, Hulu, which is a Netflix kind of thing as well. To date, just in two months, we've had 1.7 million impressions in TripAdvisor on Hulu and almost 297,000 views on Hulu as well. Another component we're doing is we're going to morning and afternoon drive shows. We've all heard "Good Morning Columbus" and those kind of shows. They have those in all our feeder markets. Actually, today, Josh was just up in Cleveland doing a three-minute piece in Cleveland. Next week, we're going to Indianapolis, the weekend after that is Detroit. So those are three minutes, you can imagine, in a TV with millions, a captivated audience. And all we're going to do is sell in Dublin, you know, Irish festival, the great product we have, our hotels, our restaurants and such. So that's another area that we're being able to infiltrate those feeder markets as well. Obviously, with this money, we've always kind of leveraged our money as best we can, and that's kind of been a mainstay of what we've done, and that hasn't changed. We are now partnering with the Columbus Zoo as well, and it's a unique campaign where we've targeted Fort Wayne, Indiana, and we've targeted the top three radio stations in those markets. And we're bringing DJs from those radio stations to Dublin, actually next week, with their families. And they're going to come to Dublin, enjoy the city of Dublin, the zoo obviously, and then go back for the next month or so and tout how great of time do on-air cuts on their radio stations and so forth there. So it's another kind of unique thing that we're doing. And finally, in terms of bloggers, you've heard us talk about bloggers before, those are folks that are tremendously influential with huge followers. We're averaging securing two to three bloggers a week right now. We have 33 bloggers right now, close to 500,000 impressions as well. So it's a lot of work to get those people here, but they're influential. That's that kind of third-party endorsement that you hear in TripAdvisor and others that it's, you know, obviously, I'm paid to tell, sell Dublin and say it's a great place, but it's great to have that endorsement from those as well. So those are kind of where we stand on result-wise. You know, in the future, if there's other metrics that you guys would like to see, we want you to be comfortable with how we're using this funding, if there's things we can do, more information to provide you. You know, other results, let us know. We have all kinds of results, and it's just kind of trying to figure out how to fine-tune it to make sure you guys are okay with the direction we're going and what we're doing with it. And then finally, before I show the quick video, we have some big business coming here in Dublin in the next week or so, the next month or so. We've talked about the National Archery Championship that we secured with the city folks. That'll be here in August. We now have nine international teams coming here. It'll be in Dari, August 26th and 28th. Most of the teams will be coming directly from Rio, competing in the Olympics, and they'll be here. So that'll be a great event. We've partnered with the Columbus Sports Commission to land the National Volleyball League Tournament, which will be here in a couple of weeks at Flanagan's. But all the events will be in hotels, or here in Dublin hotels. And then another big one that we've actually partnered with is the International Jewish Softball Tournament, which will be here in 2017. And this is unique because their last three venues have been Las Vegas, Chicago and Detroit. So we're excited to have them in Dublin, Ohio in 2017. So I'm going to kind of wrap up by showing our latest video. Again, these are little 45-to-minute segments that we are using the residents of Dublin to sell our community. And I think this is one of my favorite ones because it's really the hidden gems of what we have in our community.
One, two, three, four.
We're the Tysons. I'm Jen.
I'm Matt.
This is Evelyn. And that's Eleanor.
You girls say hi.
Hi. So we started off at Indian Run Falls today, and we walked through the trail, and we went down into the waterfall to let the kids splash around and play and kind of just explore nature. We had a little snack at the picnic area. It's a nice place to go and sit and just relax and enjoy the scenery. We are at the Bunny's Park at Ballen Tray. That's what we call it, at least. We call it the Bunny Splash Pad.
The Dublin Recs website and the parks website is just fantastic. I mean, there's so many parks that are in the neighborhoods that you don't even know exist.
We want to go to the water.
You want to go to the water? Why do you want to go to the water?
Because I want to play. It's splashy, splash.
Share your So Dublin moment.
Again, thank you for your partnership. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you, Scott. We're very supportive of all of your efforts, and we really appreciate what you're doing for our community. So thank you very much.
Correct. Thank you.
Citizen comments. We did not have anyone sign in, but did anyone come in a little late that would like to make comments on any items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no hands and hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. As there is only one item, does anyone want to remove Resolution 40-16 from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, I guess... I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
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 Second readings. Ordinance 24-16, Judy. Hi, Angel.
Good evening, members of counsel. As the title suggests, we are requesting to amend the 2016 appropriations. This ordinance has been revised since the first reading last week. Specifically, Section 5 has been reduced from $4.8... I'm sorry, $4,863,000 that was initially requested for Bridge Street District improvements. That amount has been reduced down to $4,481,500, which is a reduction of $381,500. That reduction is based on actual bid results that came in at the end of last week. So we didn't clearly have that information for the first reading, but we did want to reflect that in the second reading. A number of questions were asked during the first reading. Staff has provided a written response to those questions, which was included in your packet. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from counsel? Chris?
I have just a couple. That's okay. So thank you for this information. I really appreciate you putting it all together. I'm sure it took quite a bit of time. From the 9.9 in Section 5, from the $9.9 million, it was $2.1 million over budget for the Blocks B and C roadway improvements. In the memo, it addresses that the escalation occurred because of increased material and construction costs since the preparation of the original estimates. Some due to higher project coordination costs associated with building the roadways in the midst of extraordinary volume of nearby ongoing building construction activity. Says not typical of a suburban setting. And some due to the addition of underground facilities like Dublin. For the balance of the projects that we have going on in Bridge Street, have we made adjustments to our budgeting process to reflect what we learned from this?
Well, I think with any of our projects, whether they are within Bridge Street or throughout the whole city, as time goes on, when we program dollars within the CIP or with any other budget, as time goes on, the design gets furthered, we get more accurate costs. So certainly, whenever we update the CIP or bring information to counsel, we try to bring the most up-to-date information. But unfortunately, sometimes until we get into further design of those projects, we don't have as good of estimates. We refine those as time goes on. When the development agreement with Crawford-Hoyne was entered into last July or August, when it was approved, the design was at a much different phase than it was, you know, it's developed over time. And as such, the construction, once it got bid, those numbers reflected, you know, after staff reviewed it, reflected the actual costs of those roadway improvements that we were responsible for.
Okay. Some of the additional work is spelled out additionally in here. I just want to make sure, since part of the note in here was not typical of a suburban setting, you know, we are 21 percent over budget. I just want to make sure that as we're looking at numbers, particularly in the district moving forward, that we're considering that stuff because 21 percent is, it's a lot.
Certainly. I mean, we tried...
We usually have a 10 percent kind of factor in there, but 21 is a lot.
Certainly. We will make every effort to make sure that the estimates that we provide are as accurate as we know it at the time that we're presenting them to counsel.
And these are for monies that have already been spent. This is just transferring the money to cover the expenses that we've incurred.
Correct.
It's not approval of the expenses. It's just to cover the cost of money that's already out.
That's correct. Either already out or have been encumbered to pay out as part of our requirements under the development agreement.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate all your work on that.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else, Chris? Counsel, any other questions? Judy, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Ordinance 25-16, Judy. And my understanding being is this is on for public comment. Is there anyone that has any interest in commenting on this ordinance? And otherwise, I will make a motion to indefinitely postpone passage of this legislation.
Yes, sir. We'll continue, we'll ask, appreciate that you'll continue to postpone it, and certainly we'll keep residents apprised of the process going forward too, so they'll have time to comment.
Counselors, or Amy, anything you want to say you didn't have an opportunity at the last?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the postponement.
It's to see the other jurisdictions, what they're doing in their procedure of passage. We're the first ones to address it, as I understand it. Is that right?
Right. The intent to get it before you in an ordinance fashion was to get it into your hands so you could start to review it, review the... It's really pretty close to a final draft, but there were a couple of other jurisdictions still looking at it that may provide comments still, but we wanted to get it in your hands for review and in the hands of the public so they could start getting comfortable with the document. We pretty much anticipated there would be some postponement once we introduced it, so...
Gotcha. And so these other bodies are looking. Do we have any ideas when they will be voting?
I do not at this time. I know there was a meeting set this last week at Jerome with their Planning and Zoning Commission, and I had not heard yet how they were going to advance it, but I'll keep you posted during your recess here in July.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Tim, anything to add on all this?
No.
Okay. I made a motion to indefinitely postpone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Resolution 41-16, Judy?
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to Section 8.04 Contracting Procedures. Paragraph C, waiver of competitive bidding for the purchase of replacement firearms and associated equipment for the police division.
I'll introduce it. Chief?
Good evening, counsel. This resolution is to waive bidding requirements for the procurement of our handguns and associated equipment. As you know, in the associated memo, the manufacturer recommends replacement or refurbishment of our handguns every 10 years. We've determined it's much cheaper to actually turn in and trade in the old ones than to try to refurbish the old ones. Or, I'm sorry, trade in the old ones than to try to refurbish them. This, the request we're putting before you is for us to use Vance's supplies, which we have longstanding relationship with. In the past, they're a preferred vendor for Sig Sauer handguns. And they are local, will cut out all our shipping costs, and the only one in the area that has that distinction.
Counsel, any questions? I was shocked that it's $120,000 to arm the entire Dublin Police Department?
Well, that includes associated holsters, the simunitions, which is training rounds, yes.
That seems like a very reasonable price, if you're asking.
We think so.
Questions, anyone? Judy?
Yes.
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 Resolution 42-16, Judy? Mike?
I'll introduce it, as well as report on it. We have appointments, current appointments of Marilyn Baker, Ann Bowman, Stephanie Hall and Kelly Lynn, to terms that expire on March 31st, 2017, are hereby reaffirmed. The current appointment of Mindy Carr to a term that expires on March 31st, 2018, is hereby reaffirmed. Valetamore Kapustin is hereby appointed to a two-year term that begins immediately and expires on March 31st, 2018. Christine Goransky is hereby appointed to a three-year term that begins immediately and expires on March 31st, 2019. Thomas Stroop is hereby appointed to a three-year term that being immediately and expires on March 31st, 2019. And those are the recommendations of the, rather, of the Admin Committee.
Counsel, have any comment or question?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Judy?
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution 43-16, Judy?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the club at Corazon for shared recreation services.
Matt?
Good evening, members of counsel. As you all are aware, we are going to enter into our shutdown period for the Recreation Center here shortly. And in that shutdown period, there's about a two-month process that will be renovating the aquatics area for the lighting system and decking and the drainage systems. So during that two-month process, we're in the midst of trying to accommodate as many of our members as we can due to that interruption of service. We were contacted recently by a representative from Corazon, the Club of Corazon, who graciously offered up a free access to their club during this two-month period in hopes that, you know, we would be able to accommodate our members. This free access does come with some other things that we're still working out through the partnership or the arrangement. Two of those are the financial component of it, which we would be reimbursing them for some incurred costs due to this additional usage of their facility, as well as some insurance and liability issues that we're still working through. So the agreement that is before you this evening, we are still working out those details, but the staff is recommending approval of this agreement in that the final agreement will actually be very substantially similar to the agreement that's before you.
Counsel, any questions?
Will you have some metrics when this is done, specifically like how many people actually use the Corazon facility during the shutdown period? Kind of following back up with them on their feedback, what was the experience like, that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
Because I'd really, yeah, I'd love to hear about that.
Sure.
So will you bring that back to us?
Yes, I will.
That'd be great.
So what would happen was somebody would show their Dublin rec ID to Corazon and then have admittance to go use their full facilities, okay?
I just want to thank you guys because, you know, I picked up the paper and said our
pool was closing for two months, and I thought, oh boy, you know, some of these people love swimming, that's their exercise form, they go out every other day and swim, or every day and swim, I thought, boy, that's going to be hard on the people that exercise with that particular interest, then all of a sudden, within a week, we've got this opportunity to amend that and help our citizens out, so, thanks for working on this and getting it done.
You're welcome.
Matt, will you have the numbers, the costs associated with this prior to fully executing this kind of engagement, or is this something that it'll be reimbursable in terms of that they'll display what their additional costs were and we reimburse them based on those numbers?
Good question. I think the preferred method here, I've already had conversations with the representatives from Corazon, so I'd like to, you know, approach it two different ways. One is not to exceed a certain amount, and then to be the actual amount of that overage based on their, their costs that they can define for us as we go through the process.
So when you enter into this agreement, you'll have a not-to-exceed number?
Yes.
And that will cover additional lifeguards and pool expenses, pool maintenance expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
We, I would just like to add, if I could, that, you know, normally we wouldn't, we'd have an agreement a much tighter than this, but because of the timing, they called, I think it was last week or a week before, and, and made this offer, which was terrific, and we wanted to respond to that, so it's a little bit open-ended, but, you know, these are the areas that we'll be sure to drill down on and make sure the appropriate coverages and so forth are there, so.
Do you have a feeling yet of what those not-to-exceed numbers might be? Are we close on those, or?
I have no idea.
No idea.
We can use our current data, and I've shared our current data at the recreation center with them. The difference there is, you know, the types of uses that they would be able to accommodate. Basically, it's only lap swimming on the indoor facility, but they are offering both the indoor and outdoor pool space. So I shared with them that data, so they are making sure that they're prepared for those numbers, and, you know, on certain days for the outdoor pools, that number can be in the mid to upper hundreds, and then, you know, on a daily basis at the recreation center, the same numbers, but again, the defined uses are so different.
When will they close their outdoor pool?
I don't know the exact date for that, but I do know that they, they keep it open, weather-dependent more than they do just as a date. I will check into that.
I know that we're shut down until September 18th. Is that correct?
The indoor pools, yes, and the outdoor pools, obviously, they close Labor Day.
So Matthew, you're probably anticipating some increased demand at the, our two other outdoor pools as well? Ramped up for that, or?
I don't anticipate it, mainly because the numbers that we currently have on, onboard today as recreation center members and outdoor pool memberships, we are nowhere near the, any kind of even comfortable capacity level, so I'm not anticipating any increases that would take us to a point of that uncomfortability.
Fair enough.
And we save the cost, right, from not chlorinating the pool that's closed at the-
And lifeguards, yeah.
And lifeguards, so we are saving some expense that we will reroute up to the Corazon.
Correct.
Are we going to have any kind of signs or directions or anything like that to tell people, hey, you can go up to Corazon?
As soon as we can get this agreement executed, we will, we will make sure that that word gets out, for sure.
Great.
Everybody else?
Thank you.
Could I, I'd just like to add one more comment. I, you know, this is a great opportunity for partnership, but we'll learn a lot through this process, and also try to have discussion about potential use of other parts of the facility, programming and so forth. When they initiate a call to me at first, express an interest in that, and that, I think, will play into some of the other discussions we're having with other facilities as well. So this is a little bit, this isn't a little bit, this is a lot of a learning curve for us, so we'll see how this one goes.
We're going to put our toe, we're going to put our toe in the pool.
Exactly, there you go.
It was too weak, it was too-
Couldn't help it, could you? That's good.
So Matthew, there's statewide standards on lifeguards and their credentialing and so forth, so whatever we have in terms of lifeguards at Corazon will be in compliance with whatever our rules and requirements are, our standards, I guess?
That's, that's correct. They are all regulated by the state health, health department-
Okay.
And the, and the local health department.
Want to make sure we're clear on that, because if we have a problem, it's the first thing they're going to point to.
Everybody good? Amy, anything? You good? Judy?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh? Yes.
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 Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras Grooms? Yes.
Yes.
Under the other portion of our agenda, fee waiver request of the Dublin Community Church, Michelle, here you are. Hi, Michelle.
Good evening, members of council. The city recently received a waiver request from the Dublin Community Church. We do have with us this evening Barb Anderson, who's representing the Dublin Community Church. This request was for waiver of building permit fees related to the installation of some automatic doors on the church. This project has been submitted to ARB and was approved in April. To provide some additional background to council related to this waiver request, it hasn't typically been our practice to waive these type of fees. We did do some research, we found two similar waiver requests in the past that were approved by council, and both of these had specific circumstances related to the reasons for recommending the waiver, and I'll give a brief overview of both of these. The first was granted to Dublin City Schools. It was a 50% waiver of the fee for rezoning of their administration building located on Westbridge Street. This was approved due to the fact that they had previously submitted a rezoning application, paid for that fee, and then they withdrew their application, and then five years later they came back for rezoning again, so we, council decided to grant them that 50% waiver of that fee. The other one also in 2001 was for a sign permit for Indian-run Methodist church, and this was a full waiver for that signed fee due to the fact that the city was performing some roadway and bike path work adjacent to the church that caused them to have to move their sign. So that's a little bit of background related to this fee waiver that we were able to find in our history. I can answer any questions, and as I mentioned, Ms. Anderson is here this evening to answer any questions.
Ms. Anderson, you want to come up? Might as well hear from you first before we open it up for questions. Welcome. Just give us your name and address.
Sure, thank you. Barb Anderson, address 8952 Tartan Fields Drive, Dublin, Ohio. So just a little background, there is a letter, I believe, that your group has received. Thank you for hearing me, by the way. So there is a letter that I wrote on behalf of our church requesting the fee waiver. Basically, as you know, we house the Dublin Food Pantry in our church. I'm a longtime member of the church, formerly on church council, I'm a volunteer with the food pantry, I'm on the food pantry board, previous moderator of church council, so member since 1990 of our church. So the food pantry is housed in our church, but we are asking for this on behalf of the church, not of the food pantry, so I'm here representing the church. We are very thankful that we received approval for the automatic glass doors. As you may know, we previously, we currently have wooden doors in our main entrance to our church, which is the Franklin Street parking lot entrance to Dublin Community Church, which is in the historic district. So we were very pleased that we got approval for the glass doors that we plan to replace in the near future, once we raise the funds for the, for the installation of those doors. Our church treasurer is also here, Jim Ramey, longtime member and treasurer of our church, if you have any specific questions related to that. Basically, we realized it's only $618, but we were told, once we got through the ARB approval process, then I was told that I needed to go to the building permit division. So I spoke with Ray Harpom of that division, so he informed me of the fees required to apply, to fill out the building permit. So I asked him about a fee waiver, and that's how I ended up here, talking to you. So that is where we are. Obviously, if you don't know, we're a very mission-oriented church, we have the food pantry housed in our church. We do a lot of outreach to the community beyond the food pantry, well, you know, welcoming anyone who wants to meet in our church, you know, if we have space available, sometimes at no charge to groups that want to meet in our church, and sometimes at a charge. We are very judicious with our treasury and with money that is given to our church for the purpose of outreach in the community. Again, we are very judicious with our budget and our money that is given to us. So $618 is just more money that is not budgeted in our current budget of our church, that we will have to, you know, find ways to find, that $618. So I realize that's the minimum amount, but I also realize we're in the historic district, we are the only church in the historic district, I believe, if I am not mistaken. So this request, you know, is because we are in the historic district, we have to pay the fees, and we are the only church in the historic district, so that's why we are asking for the waiver of fees. Basically, if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Anderson, you mentioned that you have a lot of groups. I know that you have the Red Cross Blood Drive there, I know there are a couple other groups that meet. Can you detail in, I mean, it sounds like you have a lot of visitors that come to the historic district via your church and activities there?
Yes.
About how many people do you suppose per week?
Wow.
Or how many meetings, if you can?
Well, we have, we have AA meetings, Alcohol Nonviolence Meetings, literally nearly daily. We have a huge group that meets on Friday evening, we have groups that meet at least two early mornings a week and at least two noon meetings a week of AA. We are maxed out on the amount of meetings that we can have with those groups at our church. They do not, we do not charge them a fee for coming to our church. They, I believe, pay us a small amount every month, but that's sort of up to them to pay. Food pantry, obviously, all the traffic that comes in with food pantry, deliveries, volunteers, deliveries from stores and from Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and food drives that come in, and the clients that come in and out of the food pantry, three client choice days a week for food pantry clients. Red Cross, I believe, is once a month, I believe Red Cross is once a month. We have an Embroiders Guild that meets there once a month as well. We only charge them a nominal fee for being there. We have some groups in the summer, summer camps that ask for our space to use, and some of them are charged, some of them are not. We have a group of Indian dancers that meet there quite a few number of times a week. They do pay us a monthly fee, part of that goes to an orphanage in Indio, which, which they help support with the fees that they pay.
Does Meals on Wheels use your facility?
Meals on Wheels uses our facility as a pickup, drop-off and pickup location.
Which is every day?
So, yes, it is every day that they are there, they are on the upper level of our church, but they are there every day.
I'm wondering if council might be interested, I know that we don't typically waive fees like this, but I'm wondering if, we always grant, we have grant programs for visitors in the historic district and institutions and businesses and groups that bring visitors to the historic district, and it sounds like, I mean, this is a church, but it's also a pretty big generator of visitors to the historic district, and I'm wondering if there might be a way that we could get at this that way, because we do have grant money available for encouraging visitation. I mean, this, this church does so much other than hold services on Sunday and, you know, minister to the community that way, they're, you know, you've just heard her detail, all the different programs that are invaluable, and, you know, as she pointed out, it's a small amount of money, but in the overall budget for us, but, you know, in terms of grants, not a big grant, but for their budget-
Might be a stretch under the bed tax, in my, I mean, I'm not sure we could ask for an opinion on it, but, you know, as I read through this, to me, one of the most important parts is, you know, setting a precedent with churches is an issue, but for me, the food pantry piece, it's a really, really important function here in Dublin, and that would be a reason for me to, you know, to approve this request, if no other, and I think you could avoid the appearance of a precedent being set because of that. I've been over there when they deliver, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going in and there's a lot of stuff going out, and it's really troublesome under the prior setup.
I've, I've taken food to the pan, food to the food pantry a lot of times, and it's difficult, you're carrying a bunch of things and you're, you don't know what's on the other side of the door, because it's a solid wood door.
Yes.
You're trying to get the door open, and then you're trying to hold it open and get your, your-
And it's amazing, the number of people that are using that, I mean, we all think we're, you know, an affluent community, there are a lot of people here in great need, and it is utilized constantly, so I think the bed tax might be a way, but I think it's a stretch, and I think it would be, at least in my view, I'd make a motion to approve this request, and-
Is there other grant money other than bed tax that could be granted to, you know, I know we make food pantry?
I don't know of any other grant money available.
Now, I don't, I don't think we have anything that quite fits the definition of that. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, Michelle, if you could tell me, the permit that's required here, that's otherwise would be required here, is it, is it, would it be charged to this church if it didn't, if it wasn't located in the historic district?
There would still be the building permit fee and the electrical fee related-
Regardless of where it's located. That's what's why I'm a little confused.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I, just a point of clarification-
This church is the only one that would have to come before ARB-
I'm sorry?
But they still, this is the only church that would have to come before ARB, but they would still have the same fees related to-
It's not unique to the fact that it's in the historic district. Okay, thanks.
And our, our fees were waived with ARB, as I understand it, because we were in the historic district, so we did not have to pay the fees to ARB due to the fact that we're in the historic district. That's what I understood.
I don't, that sounds-
Everybody in front of the ARB that would be in the historic-
I don't, I don't believe that-
I think maybe it's mixed up.
But I don't want to lose the momentum I thought we had.
Yeah.
Mike, you want to make that motion?
I made a motion that we approved this.
Second.
Have a second?
Judy.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that, really, the food pantry, that's a 501(c)(3)-
Yes, absolutely.
The primary impetus, at least in my comments, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Next item on the other agenda, alcohol waiver, Dublin Historical Society Business After Hours to be held at the Kaufman Homestead. Michelle?
Good evening again. Dublin Historical Society has the opportunity to host one of the business after hours for the Dublin Chamber of Commerce here in Kaufman Park at the Kaufman Homestead. Tom Holton, the board president of Dublin Historical Society, is here this evening as well. This event would occur August 16th and would run from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We are working with Dublin Historical Society on a special events permit, and we would also assist them with placing the perimeter fencing and some other needs that they have for this event. And with that, if you have any questions related to this, or have any questions of Mr. Holton?
Well, Tom, you're going to have to come up. I thought you'd be in bed by now after yesterday and all the activities.
It didn't keep you busy enough yesterday, Tom?
Anything you want to let us know?
Just that, Tom Holton, 5957, Roundstone Place, Dublin, president of the Historical Society. Thank you, by the way, great time yesterday, thank you, council-
Congratulations.
And everyone else involved, for both Gail and myself. The Dublin Historical Society is, is hosting the business after hours, which is really a Chamber of Commerce event, and it's held monthly on the third Tuesday. It rotates, the location rotates, and many of you probably have attended. We, a year ago, we asked, we reserved a spot on the calendar, and so we've been working toward this event. It just, so we wanted to use this opportunity to showcase the Historical Society and the Homestead to other businesses, and I've spoken with, with city manager and mayor and a few others, just to show my vision or the board's vision of, of the Historical Society and how we want to broaden our reach in the community, and, and the vision, which is long-term for just making sure that the Historical Society has greater place of integrating with the city, the Convincing Visitors Bureau, work, and this is, this is part of that plan, working toward that. So that's, this is, this is part of that plan to get more outreach into the business community.
Thank you for everything that you do. I, Tom is such a wonderful asset of this community. He took my kids and I through the Kaufman Homestead one Sunday morning, and just walking through there and hearing, you know, and to be standing, literally, in the history of it all, and, and the knowledge that Tom has, it's just, you're a wonderful asset for our community, so.
We'll have the barn open, we'll have a tent remaining from the, from the Irish Festival. We're paying to have that tent remain in place, and we'll have, so the tent will be out in the yard, right outside the sea hall. We'll have the barn open, we'll be able to take some people through the house, but the barn open, and just imagine that, that'll be the spot for the members, this open to members of the chamber, so they'll, and it'll be from 5:30 to 7:00, so the parking should be open on August 17th, and working with the city, we have an application, event application in, so we'll work with the city events department to make sure that the grounds are in good shape following the Irish Festival, hope it's, hope it is, it'll be in good shape.
Tom, I think it's a great way to broaden out your base and get people interested in that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I'd like to vote for approval.
If that's a motion, I will second. Judy? If that's a motion, I will second. Judy?
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Riesgroos?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks again, Tom, for everything you do. All right, Bridge Park, G Block, basic plan review. Claudia, how are you?
Good evening. How are you, members of council, Mr. Mayor? I wanted to check quickly if you wanted to hear them back-to-back or stop and...
What's council's pleasure. We can do, there's what, three to do?
There's two blocks that we're considering tonight.
Okay, just two. Do you want to do the whole presentation and then... That's what we'll do, Claudia. Go ahead and do the whole presentation.
Maybe we would stop at the waivers, though, and discuss them independently as we move through, maybe.
Certainly, certainly. As you can see by the title slide, this has really been an effort with a lot of our new staff and a chance to mentor them. So, I wanted to thank Lori and Nicole for all the work and the help they've done on this case, and you will soon meet them, I would hope. This is the application for the basic plan review for the G Block, which is the southern one. H is the other one we're looking at tonight. And it's about 2.29 acres of proposed site and development before you. Quickly, this is an overview of the process. As you recall, in 2014, council made changes to the bridge street code to require basic plan review to happen at the council level if there is a development agreement in place, which there is, for Crawford-Hoying and the Bridge Park development. There is, this is our first formal step, which is the basic plan review. The applicant, at the suggestion of staff, also went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an informal review, which is not a requirement but a voluntary effort, and that discussion and the minutes of that meeting are included in your packet. So, we are now in the middle there, in the, outlined in the green, where council gets their first look at the proposed development, which outlines the scope, the character, the proposed development in a conceptual state. And council is required, though, to approve the, the basic plan before it can move forward to the final. Tonight, as you had mentioned, we are requesting council make three motions, one on the waivers for the basic plan, one on the basic plan itself, and then a motion to determine the required reviewing body for the future applications regarding this block. Quick history here, outline in red is G Block, and I apologize, I've switched directions on you. So, on the left there is North. On the bottom of the slide is Riverside Drive relocated. Council reviewed C Block, which is just to the south, sorry, just to the west of G Block in January of 2015, and then determined that the Planning and Zoning Commission was the required reviewing body for future applications, which approved the final in June. B Block then also reviewed by council in January, and also determined the Planning and Zoning Commission to be the final required reviewing body, which then made their final determinations in August. And then the most recent block that was approved was A Block, right there at the roundabout, which included the hotel, the parking structure, the event center. And council did approve that basic plan in December of 2016. Planning and Zoning Commission then in February of that same year. And in the meantime, council, as well as the planning commission, have also approved preliminary and final plots for development, public street dedication, and Planning and Zoning Commission has since also approved the master sign plan, which currently includes B Block and C Block only. So, with that, we're looking at this block that is bounded by Dale Drive, Mooney Street, Bridge Park Avenue, and Antler Ridge Drive, and it is a proposal for two buildings, both are mixed-use buildings. And G1 is a building that includes commercial office and residential units. And then G2, G3 is a parking garage, which is completely wrapped on all sides with commercial uses, office uses, and residential uses.
How many spaces?
Parking spaces, 396. There are open spaces included as part of this application. The code would require .84 acre and provided a .33 acre. There is a mid-block crossing, a plaza proposed, which is a code requirement, and it also aligns with the plaza for the C Block there. And this is one of the waivers that we'll be discussing tonight that the applicant has requested in terms of providing additional open space as part of the Sayoto Riverside Master Park. Here is the elevation conceptually for the G1 building, which is the smaller of the two buildings. It's 75,000 square feet, six stories, and includes, as I mentioned, commercial and office on the first and second floor, and then 48 residential units on the remaining floors. There is also a elevated walkway proposed as part of that to connect to the G2 building. And again, elevations as provided, and the applicant and their team and the architects are here also to, to discuss the changes that have been made as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission review, and the materials and the architectural character as proposed. This is the larger of the two buildings, the G2 building, which has the parking garage interior to the building. And we're looking at 286,000 square feet. It is four stories or five stories, depending on what street you are located at. And again, commercial and office on the first and second floor, and then 132 residential units. The applicant has, in this particular building, included different sizes of units to hit different market points and different clientele. So, there are some efficiencies and micro-units proposed that are not currently in the other buildings. So, again, the three motions requested from you all is the waivers for the basic plan that we have identified thus far, and the applicant has requested motions on, from council. There are certainly more to come as we have more details with the final plans, but at this point, these three were identified. So, I have a slide for each of them, just to explain them in a little bit more detail. And then the second motion would be for the basic plan, which the ART has recommended approval on at their June 23 meeting with two conditions, and then the appointment of the required reviewing body for the future. And your choices there would be city council, Planning and Zoning Commission, or ART. So, the first waiver is for the distance, a existing open space could be located from the main entrance of a building, and in this particular block, it exceeds the 660 feet that code would require or code would allow. So, the applicant is requesting a waiver to the maximum distance to exceed the 660 feet. The second waiver is for the parking garage entrance location. The code limits the, or does not permit parking garages to have entries of principal frontage streets, and Dale Drive is considered such a street. With the grading and the, the location of the streets as they have been approved thus far, the applicant was not able to provide an entrance on any of the other sides other than Mooney. And so, the request is to allow a garage entry to be located on a principal frontage street. And then the third waiver also has to do with site constraints, site conditions due to the grading, which is a request to allow a ground story to be taller than what the code limits it to, which is 12 to 16 feet. The, the proposal here is for 20 feet. So, the ART has recommended approval of all of those waivers, and council considered, could consider them as one, make one motion on all of them or vote on them separately. And as I said, ART has also recommended approval of the basic plan with the two conditions outlined on your screen, and then the third motion would be the required reviewing body. So, if it's your pleasure, I can break and we can talk about the waivers?
Yeah, I think maybe we should.
Sure.
I changed my mind. Maybe we should do that now, so we don't forget what it is that we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Are you waiting questions?
I can, yes.
Okay. Can you highlight for me, so, the proximity of the open space has gone from a maximum of 660 feet to 715 feet. Can you show me what, what green space they're referencing that is 715 feet away?
It is essentially the corner of the G2, G3 building, which is this one right here, to the Riverside Park.
So, the green space or the open space that they're claiming that they're providing with this building is actually a public park?
Mm-hmm. It's an existing open space and existing green space, exactly.
So, there is a lot of commentary in the code about providing open space, that, you know, each development is responsible to actually provide the open space, not, not claim somebody else's open space. But it does address fee and lieu if you are, are not going to be providing that open space. Particularly, section 153.064 talks about provisions of open space residential. There shall be a minimum of 200 square feet of publicly accessible open space for each residential dwelling unit. Required open space shall be located within 660 feet of the main entrances of the residential units or the main entrance of a multifamily building, as measured along a pedestrian way. Talks about existing open spaces that can only qualify if approved by the required viewing body. Bullet point five of C provision of open space. How, how did we get to, have we already approved the designation of a city park to the open space requirements by this developer?
This came up when council did review the, the basic development plan for the entire Bridge Park development. So, yes, that was one of the, one of the considerations, that the park would be able to be used as open space. And then the...
I didn't see any notes on that determination in our materials. Did I miss it?
I don't recall if we included all those minutes, but we certainly can provide those to you.
Okay.
So, as you're reading in the paragraph five on, then there is the applicant shall either add to the existing open spaces, create new open space, or pay a fee. We have essentially determined that they are providing additional open space as part of this block.
By accessing the public park?
Okay. By providing open space also on site.
Because that green space there on the slide, that's open space that they're providing?
Those three, exactly.
Right. And then additionally, they are in proximity to a city park.
Can I just ask a question from back in the day, and that's when Ballintry was done? Was there provisions made with respect to the golf course being part of the open space area as well?
I think so. We had pocket parks throughout Ballintry, but I think that it was, it was, I mean, I can't speak definitively, but it strikes me that we considered the golf course being...
I guess the point is, it's not, it's, it's not a precedent-setting thing here as far as that goes.
No, I mean...
And we do have a dense project that we're trying to get accomplished with respect to Bridge Street in general.
There really isn't another option, and I, I mean, to me, if you deny the presence of this city park, it's like, kind of putting your head in the sand. Yes, we have this giant park here. This is very, very close, and, I mean, I don't have a problem with this waiver.
I guess arguably, the park wouldn't be there if we didn't have the development.
Yeah. I mean, are we at 400 or 40-some feet over the...
It's less than 100.
Yeah. So, you said 700 and how much feet?
We have, in the ART approval, it was 715 feet.
So, we should be at least, we should be at 660?
Mm-hmm.
To not require a waiver?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
From the nearest entrance also. So, the site meets the 660, the lot. It's the nearest entrance of the G2, G3 building. That exceeds it.
How many residential units do we have in this building?
In total, across both buildings, it's 180.
Okay. And how many, if we took the city park out of the calculation, how many square feet of green space are they providing for that quantity of dwelling units?
They are providing point, I have it on the slide. Let me get back there. So, they're providing a third of an acre, or they're required .8.
I have a tremendous amount of concern. Nearly a third of these units are two- and three-bedroom units, which, you know, you would have, you may have pets associated with it. You'll have a lot of things, and, you know, that is really very minimal amount of space to, you know, take your dog out or your, you know, whatever. I, I think we need to require that it's in proximity and that there's sufficient space to have these residents. Any, any great urban living setting, you know, you need to have those amenities nearby. It's, it's a quality of life issue. You know, I don't know how many folks in the middle of winter are gonna cross Riverside Drive to take their dog out.
It's 55 feet is what we're talking about. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
So... Details matter.
I think we all understand you don't like the project, and that's an issue, but we've been down this road, at least for me. That's my thoughts.
Why don't we, let's get through the waivers, and then I'll give you guys an opportunity if you want to, I don't know if you want to comment on the waivers, but that clearly is where the rubber's meeting the road here, tonight at least. So, the other two are more typographical or sort of required by the grading of the...
Correct. Side constraints and topography, absolutely. So, the second one is the location of the parking garage entrance. They're on Dale Drive.
And there's really practically not a different place to put it?
Not safely.
And then the ground story height is a similar situation that the topography requires?
Correct.
Just it makes common sense?
Correct.
Does council have any questions about those?
Claudia, are they precluded from having two entrances and exits on Mooney Street? One to the north and one to the south?
I want to say, there is a distance requirement that they have to be apart from, so that could potentially be another waiver, or it would also be a waiver.
I would be interested in seeing if we could get both the entrances and exits on one street rather than have the disruption on a principal frontage street, you know, as well as the side street on Mooney.
I'd like to see how that makes the parking work, you know, in terms of the layout and just the, just the workings of it. That could, that could change.
Yeah, I was thinking if they're backing up, you probably want them on a principal street to exit on, or to get out, get it, and clear the space. I do want to compliment the developer for, we asked him to wrap the parking areas, and there was a lot of different inexpensive ways to do that with materials, and I think this is a really comprehensive way of doing it. You really won't see the parking garages at all. It's a really nice piece of architecture and well-executed.
So, Mayor, I think, given the discussion, that we probably should take these one at a time so that people can vote accordingly.
About the ground story height, does anybody have any comment on, comment on that one? The third one of the three waivers?
The 20, 20 feet versus the 14 to 16, yeah. I don't have issue with that.
Okay.
Excuse me, I, I was just gonna put this out there for a suggestion, you know, to let the applicant come forward and speak to the, the open space.
Yeah, I was trying to get the waiver, the points of discussion on the three waivers out there. So, we're, we're kind of okay with the third, not voting on it yet, but...
No, that's fine, yeah. I just wanted to hear from them before we voted.
You guys want to come up and comment on the, the three waivers you're requesting with respect to the first block that we're talking about?
And I, and I'm curious, are all these rentals, are they condos, or where are they now? There are going to be rental units?
The G Block that we're talking about now are all rental units. The H Block that we'll be talking about next are all for-sale condo units.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the, I'll touch base on everything. First, I guess, I'd need to say my name for the record, Nelson Yoder with Crawford-Hoying Building and Partners, 555 Metro Place, Dublin, Ohio. The question of open space is one that has been around since the beginning of the project. You were part of that process, I know, in these rooms. And the, I think the fundamental discussion of 250 square feet per person or per unit is one thing that we recognized early on was, it needs to be adjusted. It was determined in a vacuum before these projects started to roll out. We've determined now, as we started to look at Bridge Park, for example, that, that all of C Block would become one gigantic park under the current formula. And with the 12-acre park right across the street, something we want to see as a developer, and I think a lot of people in the city want to see too, is that park activated with people and not a park that, that is empty. So, I think by not ignoring it and, and embracing the fact that the park is there and counting that towards the open space, allowing people to go be part of that space and activate it so it looks like things are going on there 24/7, 365, inviting other people in, is very important. So, the open space that we are providing as part of these units, I think, are really, the amount, the locations were part of a comprehensive plan that we looked at when we did the master plan for Bridge Park back a year and a half, two years ago, when we strategically located pockets throughout the project that were interconnected, and you can see how that all plays together in the master plan that was up here behind me a little bit ago. So, it's been very thoughtfully done. We understand that it doesn't, we are talking about a slight extension of the distance we're talking about. The engineer behind me, Brian Quakopis clarified that's actually 770 feet is the distance from the, from the G2 entrance to, where he was measuring it. So, I'm not sure exactly where that measurement is taken, was taken, but the more conservative amount to approve for a waiver tonight would be 770, and not the, the earlier number that was thrown out, 715, I believe. So, hopefully that gives a little bit of insight where we're coming from with this particular project and with the open space. The, as far as the quality of the open spaces that we're delivering to, we are spending millions and millions of dollars on these open spaces that we are providing. So, when you just start thinking about fee and lieu, in this case, we're investing so many dollars in these individual pocket parks and open spaces that a fee... many dollars in these individual pocket parks and open spaces, that a fee on top of that would just mean that we would have to remove level of finish in a commiserate amount in order to, to maintain the budget for the project. So, we like delivering less of a higher quality, I guess, that is thoughtfully planned and executed. As far as the entrance of the parking garage coming in off of Dale Drive, what's hard to tell on a 2D plan, but it's very obvious when you go out to the site, is that the, that section of Tuller Ridge that we would try to enter is on a very steep slope, just because we have two points to connect. Tuller Ridge is already in, it's been located, Dale is already in, so we're connecting point A and point B, which has a significant slope. And introducing a curb cut on Tuller Ridge would require a flat area, so the remaining segments of street would become even steeper, and become even, even less safe than they are currently. So, what we've been able to do here by, by having the location of the entry points on Dale Drive, and also down on Mooney Street, is to maintain a consistent grade between Dale Drive and Mooney Street as you go from east to west. And it is steep, but there's nothing that anybody can do about it, because laws of nature tell us we have to connect these two points. The other thing that that allows us to do is enter on Level 2 off of Dale Drive, and we'll enter on Level 1 of the parking garage down on Mooney Street, which really does work very well for circulation and practicality to get the most parking bang for the buck.
Will you have interior circulation then, or will it be like a bank barn, where you come in, you could come in and park on Level 2?
There's interior circulation, so you come in on, down on Mooney Street on the low end, at the southern end, you turn and head to the north, and as you go north, you're, you're coming up a whole level before you turn at the first time, parallel with, with Mooney Street. Or by a level, I mean, nine or 10 feet, you're still on one continuous ramp. And then you, you continue up the remaining nine or 10 feet as you head south. So, it does loop, everything interconnects, you can enter on Mooney, exit on Dale, and then continue to go, you know, up the parking garage from there.
To be clear, I never suggested that we put an exit on Tuller Ridge. The, the suggestion was perhaps two entry-exit points on Mooney.
Okay.
Right, you know, so that, so that we didn't have to use those exits on a principal fronted street.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, I got a question, are you going to allow animals for your renters?
That process at this point is a limited amount. I think in some cases, we're thinking ground floor units only in certain buildings, only because we're trying to maintain quality of living for everybody in the units above. Ground floor tends to lend itself to that in terms of durability of finishes, and also sound, elimination of sound transfer between the units. But that, at that point, that's the outside edge of where we are looking. I think currently, our, our policy is still pet, is that we are not pet-friendly yet. I think we've been getting feedback from some of the older residents, and that one that they want to have that option as part of the project. So, what we've been doing is looking for ways to include it in certain areas that won't impact the quality of life for people that, that aren't pet people, that don't have dogs or cats. In any case, the communities that we do allow pets, they're always limited just to weight and size, too, so that allows the vast majority of people to be accommodated, but somebody with a 200-pound St. Bernard, this is probably not the right community for them.
That's not something that's codified, right? That's just a general practice.
Well, the, the weight limit's actually is codified, and it's written into our, our lease agreements with our residents, so that's-
Right, but you could change what the lease agreement, you could change the terms of the lease at your discretion.
We can, that's correct, but it's set up in our leasing rules. And we have yearly leases, so if somebody was disagreed with the change that was made at some point during the future, they would only have to go out through the end of their lease. And the way that we operate as a company, if somebody would come to us in that case, and there had been a policy that was changed, we would definitely accommodate them, to move them to a different location, or let them out of their lease.
So, you have the same policy, more restrictive, less restrictive, on the condo units?
Well, condo units are, at this point, we don't have any pet limitations on the condos. They're all, the townhome condos that you're going to see next, and over on Block H are all individual townhomes that are separated by party walls on both sides, three to four stories tall. So, there's really no risk of sound transfer between the walls from-
Different environment altogether.
Different environment, yeah, I mean, nothing from floor to ceiling, and very, very little sound transfer between walls. Essentially, they're owner-occupied, and we want to leave the door open for owner-occupants to do what they please, to a greater extent than our rental properties.
The construction on these units in terms of the residential portion, is it stick construction, is it slab on deck, slab on grade?
A combination of slab and stick. We have some cast-in-place podiums that are being poured out as part of the project, and then once you clear a certain height, in the case of this project, the area right on Mooney Street is slab, there's a slab above that, and that converts to stick, and the stick construction wraps around the rest of the project. So, typically, the lower, more commercial floors that we have, in this case, it's the first story on Mooney, and actually wraps around the open space, is concrete. And then when you get up into the purely residential units, it is stick construction.
And is the stick construction, is it load-bearing, or is it just interior finish?
It is load-bearing, there are some load-bearing walls, and then some walls that are not load-bearing. So, typically, there'll be party, party walls that will be load-bearing, corridor walls or exterior walls can be load-bearing, and then there are a lot of interior walls that will not be load-bearing, they'll just be nearly partitions on the inside. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, if I could, thank you. I just wanted to comment with respect to the planning and zoning comments or observations that they made. I, I, I thought that they were insightful, and I think I sort of generally agreed, although, you know, I know that the comments were varied and so forth. I just wanted to offer a little feedback and give you the opportunity to respond, and any member of your team to respond as well. Probably doesn't come as any surprise, given our, our past reviews and so forth, with respect to my skeptical view of the use of the cement fiber panels. But let's not say I can't be persuaded. I, I assume that the percentage will be relatively minimal, but I'm, I'm not certain. I'm seeing this west elevation or north elevation. And then, in a somewhat similar vein, a little bit skeptical of the metal panels. Again, could be persuaded, but those are a couple of misgivings, shall we, that I have, concerns?
Tim, if I could add mine, I'd like to add aluminum windows to that as well. I agree with all of your reservations, and I would add aluminum windows to them myself.
I think Russ probably has a, his presentation to run through, too, and maybe that would be a good time to have him do that.
Great.
And then come back and talk about the architecture and materials and everything.
That's fine.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Because I think probably would be better in, in context of the overall presentation, because you'll be able to see some of these materials in action, you know, on the outside of the building.
Great, great, thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Russ Hunter, 555 Metro Place, Suite 600. Do you have the liquor? Good evening. So, Claudia's done a really nice job of introducing you to this project, so I won't belabor a bunch of stuff that we've already talked about. I really did just want to quickly go over P&amp;Z comments in general, and how we've addressed some of them. So, we'll skip through the, the site planning. So, probably the first comment, the one that came through the most, and as this building has evolved, I think we continue to strive to, to, to address this, is just that it wants to be a unique building, it needs to have a character all of its own, that it shouldn't look like the building next to it, that it, you know, it should, it should be able to stand on its own. And when we, when we had the original design, even the one that we went to P&amp;Z with, the massing still felt similar to what we were doing in, in some of the other buildings. And we'd had a lot of conversation about, you know, this, this sort of volume in the middle here, and in the original design, these were more, this, this more sort of stood on their own. And we had a lot of conversation about, you know, these buildings tend to get busy, there's a lot going on, there's ins and outs with the balconies, and that, and maybe we needed a little bit of relief. And that maybe it was okay that this acted more as a singular aspect of the building, and let the corners really, really define the building. And so, we've got a couple additional images that I think better help show this. I keep hitting the button, but it's not going. There we go. So, what we've done is utilized Juliet balconies here that allow this to really read as, as one form, and, and really let the corners shine. And I think that Moody Knowles has done a really nice job of articulating these in a way that's unique. It's unique both, on, on both corners, they're same, but slightly different. This will be a really highly visible, this is right on Dale Drive, and so obviously, as you're coming down Dale Drive and then down Bridge Park Avenue, this would be the, the gateway, if you will, into, into this project. So, that was, that was really, the other thing that we talked about was that sort of focus on that corner. You know, I, I think that they've done a, a really nice job, there's a weaving that's happening of the materials, both vertically and horizontally, that we don't see in some of the other buildings. You know, I have a feeling that people will react in different ways to some of the colors, and I think that, I think that the use of color needs to be, it needs to be studied. And it, maybe it's not a bright yellow, but maybe it is something that contrasts, something that very clearly pulls your eye vertically through the building. So, I think that we need to continue to study that, and I think that you'll see the same thing when we look at the G2 building, the, the red facade type that's on that. But, you know, the, the message that we got was really, take the design further, you know, continue to develop it, make sure that it's unique. I think they've done a really nice job of that with, with the G1 building. We, we did a quick study so that we could see how these buildings related along Bridge Park Avenue. So, you can see C2 on the left here, Riverside Drive is right here, and then as you make your way up the hill, I really think that the conversations that we had at P&amp;Z about making that a mass that sort of works together, that defines itself from this point to this point, really did a nice job of, of differentiating it from some of the other massing that we see in some of the other buildings. So, I'm really pleased at the direction that this has taken, and I think it's, one of the things that I think is really exciting about the process that we have, and continuing to, to have dialogue, and everyone's had some really, really great suggestions. On the G2 building, probably the thing that we talked about the most was there was too much going on. You know, that it was, there were probably double amount of vertical sort of balcony penetrations through the building. And so, we, we took another complete pass at how the building massed together, and I think that this is a much more successful version of it. I think that this is really going to be a transitional building, and so that's one of the things that, you know, it's a little bit less contemporary than some of the buildings that we've done, sort of Bridge Park Avenue or Riverside Drive, and that, that is intentional because there's legacy property that's to the east, that, that doesn't match everything that we're doing along Bridge Park Avenue, and that's okay. So, we had to make that transition. We wrapped the building all the way around four sides, and, and again, that was also very intentional, because we were going to have residential on both adjacent blocks to the east and to the west. And so, we, we had to be cognizant of that and, and, and address it accordingly. Had a lot of conversations, again, about the red color that we see peeking through. Some members liked it, some members were skeptical. I think it still continued to needs, to need study. But I do think that, maybe it's not red, and, and maybe it's not hardy, or maybe it is, but it's a different texture. We talked about like a, sort of a wood-grained cementitious panel, which I think would be really great. We're looking into things that we could do there, but the idea being that it is, again, sort of a relief that weaves its way through the building. And I think that that is successful in this design. Now, talking about hardy panel, cementitious siding, and even, and even metal panel, quite frankly, is, you know, when you're working with brick, stone, and glass, which are the three approved primary materials, it is difficult to come up with architectural variety, and we really want to continue to push that envelope. The thing that, that cementitious siding and, and metal panel, to a lesser degree, give us is some flexibility in the, in the texture of the building. So, if you think about, you know, a brick is, is eight by two, you can get a, a hardy panel that could be 12-foot by 4-foot. And so, you can really play with the massing of the building, you can play with the texture of the walls. You know, I wouldn't ever recommend that we use it, you know, for an entire building, for an entire facade, but I think that it does allow us some design flexibility, and as long as it's installed properly, I think it can be really, really effective. So, you know, metal panel, to a lesser degree, I say that because they can't get as big, but they offer something that hardy doesn't, which is sheen. So, you know, when you look at a metal panel building, you get a different effect, that the light bounces off of it differently than, than a brick or a hardy panel or something like that. And so, as our designers look at all of these elevations, they're really taking all of that into consideration to say, okay, how can we, can we create the best composition? That's really all I had for G block. The next slides are H block, so we can take comment or go back to Claudia.
Let's do that, let's not bite off more than we can chew at one time and deal with just this block, if that's okay. Claudia, you had, you had not necessarily gone through in detail the two conditions. Could you just touch on those briefly, so we know what we're doing?
Yes, there are two that ART has recommended as part of the approval recommendation for the basic plan. One is that we still need to work with the applicant prior to the final site plan on the Dale Drive improvements. So, there's currently a ditch there that the applicant needs to address somehow, because they certainly don't want a sidewalk and a ditch in front of their units. So, there is a little bit of work that needs to be done on the city's part, as well as their part on the design, the cost sharing, and engineering has been in tune with them on that particular issue. And the second one is to figure out other spaces for bicycle parking outside of the parking structure as part of this approval. So, those are both conditions that can be worked out prior to the final development plan, site plan application.
Thank you. Does council have any comment on these, as I see it? Jennifer, we've got five decisions to make here, the three waivers, the two conditions, and the referral to the reviewing body. Does council have any comment on any of those five?
On number two here, motion two, number two, you know, all our demographic studies have said that the, the younger group is going to come and possibly occupy your structure is very bicycle-friendly. And so, you know, you see kids taking their bicycles up the stairs to their fourth-story room and parking them so they're not stolen. And I guess, that's sort of an important aspect of this, if that's part of their culture, and they're going to ride to work on their bicycles, which I think we'd all appreciate because it's going to cut down on the traffic. So, how, how, what are your thoughts on how you're going to handle that? Is there going to be an area inside the parking garage where they can secure their bicycles without them being stolen? How are you going to handle that?
Yes, that, we do have spaces within the parking garages, that it's underneath that concrete podium that we were talking about earlier, that slab. As it benches its way back into the building, we end up with some extra space that's just perfect for, for bicycle parking. So, we've got secured parking inside of the parking garages for the tenants, and then we provide additional bike racks effectively different throughout the, the public spaces, so that if you've got a guest that's coming, you don't necessarily want to, you know, get them keys to the garage, but they want to be able to park their bike and go visit, you know, someone up on the fourth floor, or to the restaurant.
So, those are anchored appropriately, so that-
Yes.
So, you just need to find locations? This is not like it's a big sticking point?
No, not at all.
Gotcha, okay.
Christina?
And I apologize if you mentioned this and I missed it, but in the conversations regarding the entrance-exit to the parking garage, and the question over whether you could put both of them on Mooney Street, I wasn't sure if I heard a reason why you can't. Is there, is there a distance issue between the two, or is it a design issue?
It's, it's actually, well, so effectively, if we can get the map up, but I can tell you, the, the difference in grade from Mooney Street to Dale Drive is such that we need ramps for both sides of those. So, it's not, this street is relatively flat, but this street is, I believe, 18 feet, 18 feet above Mooney Street. So, what that means is, in order for this parking structure to, to function, we have to begin ramping immediately. So, we would, you know, we're several feet above the level of Mooney by the time we get down here. That's exactly why.
Thank you, that was, that was helpful.
Yeah.
We, it was, there was so much going on with the conversation, I, I think I just missed it, but that makes sense.
So, you're not going to ramp immediately?
No, we, it, it does ramp immediately. No, we, it does ramp immediately.
Oh.
Yeah, so as soon as you go in, it starts to ramp up and then it comes across and then it ramps up again so that by the time you get here, you're 18 feet up.
About 9 feet above Mooney Street.
By the time you get here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these five items?
I have a couple of questions. So you had mentioned that many of the balconies are Juliet balconies. So how many of your units will have any outdoor space versus just a Juliet balcony?
Do you happen to know what the exact number is? I don't. Typically, most of our units do have balconies. It's really just the ones along Bridge Park Avenue, excuse me, that we use to create the architectural variety on the front.
So basically, all the ground floor units?
Yeah.
Have outdoor space and the middle where the red color is are all balconies?
So, on this case in G2, those are balconies, 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 balconies. We've just masked the building over it, but then on G1 where we've got the Juliettes, those are just on Bridge Park Avenue.
Yeah.
And they're reflected in the floor plans and the packets. I didn't include those.
So, excuse me, so what is the reason for not having functional balconies on Bridge Street? Is that just a visual architectural thing?
It was a visual architectural thing that we talked a lot about at, at P&amp;Z. And the idea that, you know, I don't have the picture, but that if, if the balcony comes in six feet, then suddenly you've got this big chunk of the building that's taken. We wanted some visual relief and in order to sort of bring that elevation together, we wanted to treat those balconies a little bit different. It's one of the things that's, it's.
That was certainly one of the important things, I think, of activating Bridge Street was to have activity on, on the building, that you didn't have essentially a flat face that.
Sounds like you can have one or the other, but you can't have both, so, you know. Like P&amp;Z was given direction that they wanted that building, that what I'm hearing is putting those in changes the mass, the ability?
It absolutely does.
To make that mass look different.
There are a lot of units that have balconies and outdoor space in all of Bridge Park. And the planning commission and people, more talented architecturally than I, talked about the massing and the face of the building and how if you brought it all out and basically one plane, and you get that with the Juliet balconies. And, you know, if you have, I'm assuming that's like probably a French door that opens inward, so you kind of have an outdoor, you know, it's going to be a giant window and being within, in the unit, it's going to be, you know, a cool experience while not a balcony. But, you know, I think some people would like an outdoor space and some people might not.
Right. It effectively just increases the amount of living space, covered living space. The other thing to keep in mind too here is that in virtually every building, we have amenity spaces. And if you rent at Bridge Park, you have access to all of them. So if you've driven down Riverside Drive, you see, C1 is the, the one just to the north of the office building. And there's the cutout in the middle and you can see that terrace. So that is a, an outdoor open space that is accessible to any resident of Bridge Park virtually at any time. So even the people that would choose, for whatever reason, that they would prefer a larger living room and the Juliet balcony, would still be able at any moment to walk down the street or in some cases upstairs to get to an outdoor space within their building.
And how are those tied together if ownership of those buildings were to ever change? So, let's just think crazy for a minute and think that you would sell one of these buildings off and so they were no longer under the Crawford-Hoey umbrella. How are, is that a legal arrangement that is binding that would go with the sale of the building, that they would continue to have access?
Yeah.
The arrangement between the buildings is something that we haven't contemplated, we're not contemplating selling these buildings. We're contemplating keeping them forever because we're making a big investment in Dublin. That being said, you know, who knows what happens 20 years down the road. So it's a good question to ask. I think that's something, when you look at each one of these buildings, taken even by itself, is, we're very much over amenitizing this project, I guess I would say. You take the total amount of units that we have here, 800 units, and you take the total sum of amenities that are, exist at this site, it is far and above, you know, way, way better than any other community that you will find around in downtown Columbus or anywhere else. Because typically, it's one building that's, that's built as part of a project. It's not part of a broader plan in terms of community in this case. We have the benefit of leveraging everything that the city of Dublin is doing everywhere around the project. But then in addition to that, you have all these other amenities that are there. I can tell you that if any one of these pieces was pulled out and you look at that building as a standalone building and the amenities that are in it, around it, in terms of the tenants, the mixed-use walkable type restaurants that are there, the spas that are there, everything else, it's, it stacks up and will exceed anything else that's out there.
So when you calculate amenities, you calculate the, for purchase things as well? A restaurant is an amenity to the, to the apartment dweller?
Yeah, when somebody shops for a, an apartment, they're looking at the walk score for a project and they're looking at that specifically. So when we look at that and the amenities of any building, and that's really what we found out when we did our market research, we asked people what, what's important and what is around the apartment was, is one of the things that we heard back was the most important thing that people look at when making a buying decision. The only thing I wanted to touch on though, the reason I was up here, I'll sit down and let Russ get back to this, is on the, these units that are Juliet, they are unique to this building in terms of, when you look at the other projects, there's very few balconies that have larger living spaces and Juliet balconies. So by introducing that in this building, we're satisfying P&amp;Z's request to make the massing look different, but we're also satisfying the market demand to provide something different, which is a larger living space and still a Juliet balcony. Our previous projects, Lane Avenue is an example of this, on the backside of that building, we eliminated the balconies just out of deference to the neighbors behind the project who didn't want people looking into their neighborhood. And that turned out to be a great change for the project for the better because we ended up with a variety of units and some people preferred the units that did not have a balcony that had larger living spaces. And it provides a different price point to hit different people or different package of amenities. There are lots of different renters and we're trying to get to many different types. So it's actually, I think this is one of those happy accidents that we've come across where we're really satisfying P&amp;Z's needs and we're also going to be, you know, broadening the shotgun approach as we go out there and try to, to get more renters to come to this environment and choose this over Grandview or downtown or somewhere else. So, I just wanted to throw that in there.
Can I ask a question of Claudia? Are Juliet balconies permitted in the code?
Yes, there is a size requirement. Everyone says they are six feet, is it six or eight?
Deep or wide?
Wide.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Yes.
So this is an element that's a permitted thing in the Bridge Street? Okay, thank you.
In your, in your lease and deed restrictions, I presume there's a specification on what you can actually do out on your balcony. You know, I'm leading up to the people that might dry their beach towels out there and, you know.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, we, they actually, we have written into the lease agreements and it's policed, believe me. The Lane Project is a great example where they're out there constantly and making sure there's not stuff hanging over. Only certain colors furniture are allowed, so there's a consistency in the look.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
On these, on these dwelling units, part of our code requirements is that all the buildings built in Bridge Street should be convertible, meaning that they can serve different uses over the course of time. These dwelling units, can they serve other purposes? Can they be repurposed? Can it become office? Can it, you know, is, is the construction such that it will, it allows that level of flexibility?
No, stick-built construction, it would not have that level of flexibility. There's a big difference between concrete or steel and stick-built. And that, that difference is not just obviously flexibility, but it's also cost. And quite frankly, to build market rate apartments in this region, you could not build it out of, out of a completely steel structure or a completely concrete structure and rent it and be able to rent it for what people are willing to pay. And so that's, that is a, that's a reflection of the market, quite frankly. And, and so what we have to do as, you know, as Moody Nolan and the designer, design team is, is come up with a way to, to create the best product that we can out of, out of that material.
And one of the earlier questions we asked you guys about was the possibility of converting the rental units into condominiums and is that still a possibility?
Yes, that is absolutely possible. It's basically a residential use to a residential use. What you couldn't do is if, an office floor plate as an example, typically they want 30% or you.
No, I understand all that, yeah. Thank you.
Right, right. So like, on the G2 building, you know, that first level, that is, that is concrete underneath that first slab. So one thing, a, a great example actually, on the B block garage where we had under that slab there on Long Shore Street, they were originally residential units. There was a market for commercial space and because on that ground floor, we had the slab, we were able to convert that to, to retail. But there is a big difference between that and actually making the leap up to office.
I thought the whole point of Bridge Street was to have living and retail and entertainment and restaurant, everything, it's mixed use. So I guess I'm, I'm not perceiving it as a negative that we have a lot of living units and we have retail and such. And somebody could work from their home, which is very common in Dublin.
Right. And, and you know, as we continue to talk with, with residents and, and commercial tenants alike, that mix is the reason why they want to be there.
Any other comment with respect to block G?
Russ, can you tell me, are you using that panel? You talked about a little panel, metal panels that have some of this reflective quality.
The millennial, millennium tile?
Millennium tile?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And are you, is that what is going to be on the top of G1?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are those a much lighter weight unit than the fiber cement board?
The tiles themselves, yes, yes. And they're, they're smaller scale as well.
Is that why they get used at the top of the building?
Yes.
Because the weight load probably wouldn't hold heavier materials? It needs to be something light because of the way it's constructed.
Right. There's a, there's a building code provision that you have to stop the brick at a certain height.
If you have a chance to Google search "millennial tile" and see some applications of it, it's a very cool looking building material I'm looking forward to. That will make a difference in the appearance and I think it'll be a wow factor for this building.
The Columbus Library is actually using it in some of their newest buildings. So, we have applications of it here in town.
My primary concerns in, in the comments that I made earlier with respect to, you know, whether it's millennial tile or metal panels or cement fiber and so forth, is, is long-term sustainability. I, I would have a concern regarding the, the color choices, but, but it's primarily regarding sustainability, long-term. And I think some of the planning and zoning commissioners expressed that, that similar concern. That's all, thanks.
And I understand that you guys went to the extra length of changing the fasteners on the buildings so there wouldn't be any corrosion underneath them. But I think some of the newly appointed P&amp;Z members were real sharp and really caught something that I think almost everybody in construction misses. So, kudos, I think it's the right thing to do because one thing we don't need on this kind of material is rust stains coming down the, the material, the stucco or whatever it's going to be, the paneling. Thank you.
Okay, we ready to go through these on block G?
I'm ready.
I will make a motion that we approve the basic site plan waiver number one with respect to block G, that being the open space maximum distance requirement. Is there a second?
Second.
Judy?
Mr. Reifiger?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
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 Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
No.
I make a motion with respect to waiver number two of, with the same block G of the parking garage entrance location. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Judy?
Ms. Aley?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
No.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo? Yes.
Yes.
If I would, I'd like to condition that on one thing, is that we started with a blank slate and we could have located anywhere and not required waivers. You know, in my mind, waivers are designed when we get into a real pinch, when we get into the infill, when we get into the last pieces that we don't have other things to do. This, we had lots of opportunity, we had the whole site. So, just wanted to qualify that.
I, I think part of this though, to be fair with them, is you've got elevation changes that are pretty severe and they're just asking you to adjust to those elevation changes and I think it's a no-brainer. I think we also knew, under, under form-based code, that we'd, we'd have waivers. That was part of the, we knew that that would be part of the process, so I don't have any heartburn over this at all.
It was absolutely expected and we knew and that was why we put waivers in the code.
Everybody's duly noted. I make a, well, do we, did we, we did call that vote. I make a motion that we approve the third basic site plan waiver with respect to block G being the ground story height requirement. Is there a second? Judy?
Ms. Aley? Yes. Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Reifiger?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Moving on, I approve, I make a motion that we approve the basic site plan with the two conditions. Jennifer, you want me to go through those specifically or they?
If you would please, I'd appreciate it if you'd go through the two conditions.
Go through the two conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, the first condition being the applicant continue to work with staff to detail construction of portions of Dale Drive to Public Street standard appropriate for occupancy of the residential units, including construction design and cost sharing. That being, you wanted me to do these as separate, is okay, no, okay. And that they work with the applicant to determine the location for the bicycle parking outside the parking structure. I make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Judy?
Ms. Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aley? Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reifiger?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Yes.
And with that, you had mentioned that there will be bicycle parking on the inside. And that's really important because we are trying to meet the requirements of the future tenants who actually utilize bicycles. So it's got to be something well-done that they're going to feel comfortable with and secure. They're, they're rather expensive bikes possibly, so, thank you.
I'm just going to make this motion, see how it goes. I make a motion that we refer the review of the development plan and the site review application to the planning and zoning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Judy?
Ms. Reifiger?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo? Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aley?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan? Yes.
Okay, so that does it with respect to block G. Block H, Claudia?
I'm going to skip over the fluff and just get.
Sounds good.
To where we need to be because it's the same fluff. The site is there to the north of the G block. It is adjacent to Sicamora Ridge Apartments and the Vrabel Healthcare to the north. It has frontage on John Shields Parkway. The site plan here, and again, I have turned directions on you, north is John Shields Parkway, the south is Tolliveridge Drive, which is then also the front of the building that we had just looked at. The proposal is for six buildings. There are 73 townhome units proposed that are for sale, so they're condominium units. Each of them would have a private garage to the rear of the unit that is accessed by an auto court. And there is one new Public Street proposed as part of this block, which is Laramore Street, and that would provide access between Mooney Street and Dale Drive. This proposal also includes John Shields Parkway-Greenway as their north on property boundary. And when the Planning and Zoning Commission on Thursday night reviews the proposed preliminary and final plan for that, that will be a lot, that is not for development, but it is for open space. Speaking of open space, there is a requirement of .34 acres here and the provision is 4.45 acres, which is the John Shields Parkway-Greenway, which will be dedicated as a lot, as I said. There is also a mid-block crossing, which is a requirement in the code and is used here as a more private open space. There is access for the public if the public wanted to get from Mooney Street to Dale Drive, but the intent is more to have this open space be used by the residents of the, of the condominium units. And there is a swimming pool also proposed as more of a private amenity. The Planning and Zoning Commission commented on that a little bit at their June review of that informally, and they really wanted to make sure that the public still could get through here. Architecturally, again, architects are here to talk about this proposal. It's a lot of more contemporary architecture, something, given the height and the type of units proposed that we've not seen yet in the, in the Bridge Park development, but there are towers included that provide access to rooftop amenities as well. And then, like I said, there are one or two car garages provided for each of the units and there are access through these interior courtyards. Each of those has an open space in the center, which would also provide for stormwater management. And there is bicycle parking within each of the private garages proposed. In total, there's 153 spaces proposed and those include the garage spaces and on-street spaces surrounding the block. Here, the applicant is requesting motions on two basic plan waivers, which I have slides for here in a second. And then the ART has recommended approval of the basic site plan with four conditions. And again, we would need to have council make a determination on the required reviewing For the waivers, like I said, there's two. One is for front property line coverage. There is a requirement in the code for this particular building type to have 75% of the front property line covered with building. And given the Dale Drive frontage and the curvature in the road, and then also the way that the buildings are stepping back and providing architectural relief and detailing there, there is not a 75% front property line coverage achieved here and ART is recommending approval of that waiver. And then the second one, I touched on that briefly, there are several towers proposed as part of the buildings and in the code towers are permitted only at terminal vistas, at corners if there are two principal frontage-street intersecting or adjacent to open spaces. And these three conditions are not met for each of the buildings, so there is a waiver request for these towers being permitted. And they are providing for the particular units access to rooftop amenities. For our conditions, we are requesting that the applicant work with staff and provide more detail on the parking that includes the location of all non, all on-street spaces to make sure we have a inventory of which spaces they're counting toward their requirement. We have a condition that the applicant continue working with us on the width and the determination of the, the location of the Greenway in exact details, which we will know more either at plating or at the final site plan stage. We have the same condition here for the Dale Drive frontage treatment to make that appropriate for the occupancy of residential units. And then, again, also our bicycle parking condition outside of the individual units for resident, and visitors. So those are the four conditions that ART is recommending approval of. And in the third motion, again, the required reviewing body. So the applicant has a team with a different architect here tonight to answer any questions if you have questions regarding that. And I'm going to stick around, thank you.
Russ?
Yes.
So I'll make this short and sweet. So the conversations that we had at, at P&amp;Z about this particular block, as it related to, to site, really focus on this, this open space here. Originally, the pool was in this location and that while it was better for the sun, it was, it wasn't as good for accessibility through. So it, it effectively blocked the, the clear passage through this space. So we took another look at it. We actually ended up eliminating a couple of units in order to move the pool from here to here. We actually think it's a great move. I think it makes this space a heck of a lot nicer if, you know, no matter which side of the road you're parked on, now you, you have access through, you can get to, to everyone's front doors. Like I said, I, I think that this, this building here starts to shade at, at night by about four o'clock, so it's going to eliminate the sunning time a little bit, but we still thought it was a, a great move overall. The other thing that came up was just turning maneuverability. I believe in the package that you have, EMHNT, our civil engineer, has done the maneuverability studies to confirm that, you know, all of these garages can be ingress and egressed with one move. So it is, it's, it's not an issue. As far as the architecture goes, I think it was received really well. We've actually, and since, well, I actually just got them today, some updated renders that reflect the, the elevation designs that you, that you've seen. So real quickly, just wanted to kind of show you these. These are the, some of the views. The, there are really three basic plan types. There's a smaller, a smaller unit, mid-sized unit. The smaller unit's two-bedroom, the mid-side unit's three-bedroom, the, the largest one can be a four-bedroom. The largest ones on the corners with a patio that breaks between these two units here. So this is all effectively one unit here. The middle-sized units are the ones that have the towers that Claudia had talked about and, and those provide access to a, a rooftop deck. And then the smallest units, those are, are these brick ones here that have outdoor space both on the ground floor and on the second floor. So in this case, owner occupied, everyone has outdoor space. That's really, you know, all that I had, so welcome to questions.
I'm sort of curious, if you've got two and three and four-bedroom units, and the parking spots allocated as one, one or two cars, is that what I read or?
It's, it's one, and I misspoke, it's actually three bedrooms. They're both three bedrooms, the, the bigger ones, one has a media room, like it, it's not a four-bedroom. The two larger ones have a, a two-car garage, the smallest one has a one-car garage, and that's really just a function of the width of the unit, that at some point they get too narrow.
How many square feet are in the smaller units?
About 1,400.
Okay, so they're small.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate a parking problem though if some young couple moves into, because I can remember living in a 1,200 square foot unit and having two cars. And do you anticipate any problem then with the cars and where you're going to park them and how it's going to all happen?
We do not. We've provided between the on-street and the garage spaces more than two spaces per unit. We, you know, with the experience that we've had in other projects, we do not anticipate a
Is the on-street all metered?
I don't believe so. I don't believe there's any plan for that.
Is it assigned or?
On-street?
Yeah.
No.
Could you comment about exterior materials?
Oh, yes. So it's, it's really a combination of, of different types of brick. We've really got two different types of brick. And then metal panel accents, and, and that's effectively it. There's, there's some sun shading devices that, that we're using to, to create some architectural variety, but pretty basic.
Will you do any trellising on the roof? I know, you know, the towers kind of stick out at this point in time because they're, they're in isolation. Will you have any trellising up there that will soften the appearance of the towers? You know, because they're, I got, they meet the definition of tower, but they are not really functioning as towers, they're more functioning as circulatory throughout the building. Is there any way we could make them, to soften them in terms of adding trellis or some sort of structure to them so that they might appear softer and more integrated into the building?
I think that can absolutely be, be studied. We just want to be careful to not, you know, if you add too much, then it starts to read as that fourth story.
Right.
And so there would, there would have to be a, would have to be a, have to be a happy medium, but I think it could be studied.
I, I think it's great. I, I really like the use of the rooftop garden like that. I, I would really like to see that the appearance of the tower softened. Maybe, maybe it's treating the wrap around the top of it differently, maybe it's pulling some of the eye downward rather than pushing it upward with the wrap that you have on it. Maybe it's incorporating some trellising, whatever. I, I would, I agree that they should be there and I agree that it's an appropriate use to get to the rooftop garden. I don't necessarily, I'm not thrilled with the way they're finished because I think it draws attention to them and I'd rather take attention away.
So, so the, so the towers, they function, they, they house stairways? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
In each case?
In each case, yes.
Okay.
That, that, that tower is literally just the stairway that takes you up to the rooftop and nothing more.
Okay.
It's in somebody's unit.
And it's in, it's inside somebody's unit.
Oh, interesting, okay, thanks.
Is there elevator access?
No, there, there are townhomes that, that, it's not, it's, it's not like a public space, it's just within your own townhome. So there's a stair for each one that's completely compartmentalized.
Oh, wow, so you have your own stairs up to the roof?
Right.
Wow.
Are they separated up, up on top?
Yes, they would be.
Which one is their own deal, okay. So they could put garden, they could do whatever they want up there, or?
It's really a neat space. I just visually, I would just like to get attention off of it.
Yeah, they're a little heavy, yeah.
Anything else, council? Any of those issues? Nelson?
Sure.
I just wanted to talk about our parking calculations too. When we put this together, we specifically didn't include the Dale Drive parallel parking spaces because we, as we approached this project, the direction that, that we received while we were drafting the development agreement was that Dale Drive was going to happen when it happened, you know, at the city's discretion. So our, our design approach with EMHNT from the beginning of this has been, we're not sure when Dale Drive is going to happen, so we'll design the project in such a way that it functions without Dale Drive being upgraded. And when that happens, when, when the city elects to do that, that, that is, it's prerogative. So I just want to let you know that those parking calculations were done, not including the parallel parking on Dale. And, you know, at this point, our, our discussions with the city in terms of cost sharing, I noticed that this was a condition I just want to go on the record here tonight, that the, there haven't been really any discussions quite yet in terms of cost sharing, close coordination obviously with the city. We want to make sure that the, the location of the temporary sidewalk, location of the roadways that we're putting in, and the infrastructure that we're building now works in conjunction with the city's improvements on Dale Drive. They need to be hand in glove and we're working closely with city staff on that. But I just wanted to let you know that that would be a, a departure from where we were at when we completed the development agreement to have the developer and the development get into the construction of Dale Drive. It's, we're okay with the fact that it could come at a later date and we've anticipated that all along.
Okay, great, thank you.
Claudia, could you put up the overhead that shows the roadway network including Dale Drive? Okay, there. You know, much of Dale Drive is, is established in terms of this portion by the existing Dale Drive. I just wanted to say I'm, I'm sympathetic to your waiver on this section of Dale Drive because essentially you have to connect the two points and you're coming in in a curve and you have to match up on the other side. So that's a, kind of an existing condition and I, I am sympathetic why you'd need a waiver on that because that, that largely, that roadway network was outside of your control.
Council, anything else?
I wanted to ask a real quick question of Russ. The renderings that we saw previously, it wasn't as detailed. It looked like the brick was kind of like a gray and we had like a beige and a gray and a white, and that looks more like a dark brown. What color are we actually, or is that black or what?
Bricks haven't been selected and that's what you get when you, you look at a rendering on a piece of paper and you look at it on this screen and this screen, is they never render out the same. So I think we would intend that this is going to be sort of a, a blackish and probably more of a grayish, but until the brick is in front of us, it's, it's really difficult to make that pop on screen.
Okay, all right. I'd be interested in seeing, I guess, whenever we look at this at P&amp;Z, the building materials, that would be helpful. As you know, I'm a fan.
Anything else? Okay, I make a motion that we approve the basic site plan waiver number one with respect to the front property line coverage of section, what is it, H that we're on? H, is there a second?
One second, Tim.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the basic site plan waiver number two with respect to the permitted roof types on block H. Is there a second?
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Reiner? Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner? Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And finally, I make a motion that we review this matter to planning and zoning for further consideration.
Excuse me, I have a question about that. There, there was documentation here about reviewing the development plan and the site plan simultaneously. Does, does this, are, are we approving that here, the, their ability to have the development plan and the site plan happen simultaneously?
Code would allow that, it's already a given.
Okay, well, okay. I read something and it's not coming to me at the moment, but, okay.
Is there, is there any issue there that Claudia that you know?
No, in terms of the details that typically is expected, it behooves pretty much any applicant to do it together.
Tim?
I'll say.
Judy?
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aley?
Yes.
Mr. Reifiger? Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner? Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving right along, the Seoda River pedestrian bridge follow-up.
Thank you.
Dana?
Yes, good evening, members of council. In your packet, you received a staff report in response to the June 20th, 2016 council workshop. Some follow-up information as a result of that regarding the Seoda River pedestrian bridge. Several items were addressed in that memo, some had to do with, I thought it would go, be good to go back and do some historical context for some of the key decisions that had been made in the past and bring everyone up to speed on that. We did an assessment of the likely costs and schedule implications of the design and the construction of the taller main tower element on, within the suspension portion of the bridge, clarifications and recommendations regarding the bridge lining, and then some identification requests for affirmation of other key decisions associated with the bridge and some other, I would say, seeking some more recently finalized planning efforts that are associated with the bridge as well. So I have asked, Terry, if you would go to the next slide, I've asked Terry and Megan tonight to present this to you. I'd like to take a few minutes, very few minutes, just to again recap historical context. Then Megan's going to talk to you about the cost and schedule impacts of the higher tower and our recommendation regarding that, as well as the lighting options. And then I asked Terry to come back and walk through an affirmation of some of the key public improvements. And the reason I'm looking for that affirmation is I want to make sure that we as staff are going down a road that, you know, keeps this moving forward and that we aren't, you know, in, in any way spinning our wheels or spending money we shouldn't be spending relative to the way ahead. So just wanted to review some of that with you and get affirmation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Terry, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. We submitted in the staff report that went out to council, I think a fairly comprehensive historical overview of some of the key actions and decision points that related to the pedestrian bridge planning. I'm not going to go through those in great detail. If you have questions about those this evening, feel free to ask questions and, and we'll follow up on those. But just high-level perspective on that reminder, council, I think some planning commission members took a visit to Greenville, South Carolina in September 2008 on there. I think that idea certainly terminated at that point. Thank you, Dana. We submitted in the staff report that went out to council, I think, a fairly comprehensive historical overview of some of the key actions and decision points that related to the pedestrian bridge planning. I'm not going to go through those in great detail. If you have questions about those this evening, feel free to ask questions, and we'll follow up on those. But just high-level perspective on that reminder, council, I think some planning commission members took a visit to Greenville, South Carolina in September 2008 on there. I think that idea certainly terminated at that point. And at the time, the Sayota River corridor framework plan, which began in early 2013, you can see with the first concept that was shared with council, that image there was in the spring of 2013, you can see how the pedestrian bridge concept for the first time was put forth. There were several elements here in terms of understanding how the bridges that were contemplated in the Bridge Street Vision Plan, the pedestrian bridge, and these other elements worked into it. But that was the, when the concept first emerged through the river corridor framework planning effort. In the CIP that was approved by council in 2013, that would be in September, so just a few months later, we're just beginning some of the preliminary engineering ideas. Many of the capital projects in that framework plan, the relocated Riverside Drive, roundabout, pedestrian bridge, and a couple others, were actually included and programmed for the first time. The preliminary engineering for all of that actually began mid-2013, once the framework plan was endorsed by council. The, by September of 2013, council had its next major work session on these topics, and again, we're about nine months into that process at that point. The concept, we noted, was, a team was being retained for the purpose of further validation, cost studies, feasibility on the pedestrian bridge as part of that effort, was a piece of that workshop update in September of 2013. Rest of 2013, we had significant public presentations. If you recall, we had a major presentation at OCLC in October of that year. I include this issue here in March of 2014, as we were advancing lots of planning on a whole series of projects. We had asked council, and council eventually, as an outgrowth of their goal-setting session, approved resolution 17-14, and that was to affirm a series of the key public infrastructure improvements that were associated with that framework planning effort. That included the Riverside Drive alignment, the roundabout, proceeding with the planning of the park, the pedestrian path. If you recall, I think we also added the Dale-Taller connector at that point, because we'd figured out that was an interim roadway that was going to be needed if we were going to be reconstructing Riverside Drive. With regard to the status of the pedestrian bridge at that point in time, the language in that resolution, continue to evaluate and refine the final design, the costs, and landing options for the Sayota River pedestrian bridge, and develop alternatives for consideration as soon as possible. We were still working on how this bridge would land. There were still cost issues and things being evaluated at that point. The planning and design issues continued to move forward through 2014, continued concept validation and refinement, exploration of cost reduction, and we've put some more detail in the memos before council this evening on that subject. The issue that I think increasingly, as we were saying, there is no affirmed landing point, even from the various actions council took in 2013 and 2014, related to the proposed location shown in that first concept of it landing at North and North Riverview, simply couldn't be made workable for a whole series of reasons. We've outlined those briefly here. But the accessibility issues, the topography, the impacts on future development and road designs as they were beginning to emerge in that area, the lack of good pedestrian connections to and visibility from any kind of landing plaza at a high street, and the negative impacts of projecting this kind of landing area into this deep hillside condition with a park, there were just a whole series of things where we weren't comfortable making that recommendation, because quite honestly, it wasn't workable, wasn't deemed desirable. That said, even though those things hadn't been worked out, council did reaffirm the notion, pedestrian bridge part of the capital plan when you took action in September 2014, which was for your 2015 to 2019 CIP. At this time, we're also advancing what was called the West Side area planning. If you remember, we started working with the library extensively with regard to how might their site redevelop. We were continuing to try to figure out how this landing spot might work and fit on the West Side. The Bridge Park West project had been coming through with greater clarity. We were studying the roadway systems on the West Side, understand how those would work, particularly streets like North Riverview, some of these other locations. And all of that effort led us to conclude and eventually identified the, what we view as the preferred and the final West Side landing location. The one that emerged that did align with Rock Crest, fully aligned with the proposed roadway and its cycle track, provided a fully accessible pedestrian approach at grade with North High Street, great visibility from, interface with High Street, the new library, parking garage, Rock Crest Parkway, framed by a series of active mixed-use developments, including upper-story residential units, ground-floor restaurants, outdoor seating. It wouldn't protrude negatively into the sensitive park areas, and is sized and detailed in a way that really merges seamlessly with the fine-grained scale and quality of historic district. A lot of attention was paid to how wide should that plaza be, the size of the buildings. We gave presentations to council on that subject, and we'll follow up on that here shortly. We gave probably our largest presentation to council, updating that West Side planning effort in May of 2015 council work session. At that point, that West Side planning effort, you can see, affirmed the relocation of the pedestrian bridge itself and its landing point, to where formerly it aligned with North Street at this location. It both shifted a little bit here closer to the river, and then aligned with this plaza location. And through here, this was the Rock Crest, new library site, plaza, and new buildings framing it on both sides. We also, at that work session, began to create some of the 3D modeling, to start to show how some of these elements would work together. I think what's interesting on this one here, it does show the suspension bridge coming down, tying in before the plaza, and then an elevated pedestrian walkway tying into the plaza, the plaza lining up with Rock Crest, and being framed with buildings on both sides. Again, some of the earliest stuff, but clearly enough evidence to suggest this was workable, this was the preferred location. In May of this year, council kind of affirmed some of that planning effort that got reflected in the master park plan, the Sayota Riverside Park master park plan, which brought a lot of these elements together. It finally tied down the alignment of North Riverview through this area. The bridge reflected the proper location, the plaza, all shown as kind of key elements, and we think reflected the sum total of a lot of those planning and refinement efforts that had moved forward over the previous two years. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Megan, who'll give you the second subject matter here we talked about, which was the tower height itself and the issue of the lighting.
Good evening, members of council. During the workshop, we referred back to the cost savings analysis that was performed back in 2014, that the bridge team was tasked to go through. The goal of that effort was to bring down the costs at the time while preserving the original character of the unique iconic pedestrian bridge. During the last workshop, we discussed the tower height extensively, and council requested that we take a step back and reevaluate the tower height with the TY Lin bridge design team, which also includes Paul Andres, who's been the project architect ever since the beginning of the concept was developed. We've done that, and Paul did take a fresh look at the height, considering the landing point and other elevations that exist as the design exists today. And the team is recommending the above-deck height of 110 feet. The suspension span length would remain at the same 500-feet length. The engineers took a look at this as well, and concur that this height is technically feasible, and the designer staff, the entire team that's been working on this project, concurs that this height is preferable. And we believe that this height will enhance the experience for pedestrians on and near the bridge, as well as for those that are viewing the bridge from afar. So what does this change mean in terms of cost and schedule for the bridge construction project? The additional cost to increase the height is estimated at $500,000, and that includes, or can be broken down into $350,000 for construction costs, as well as $150,000 for design. The TY Lin team estimates it will take an additional two months of design, and then there will be another planned submission to the city, which will then take another month or so to review that submission. Because the tower would be built taller, that means more concrete, more steel, more work, which would equate to an estimated additional two months of construction time. And I'm going to discuss the impacts of this change on the overall construction schedule in a few slides, as it's not as simple as adding a few months, because any time that you shift a construction schedule, then you might be getting into a winter, which then is another challenge that we need to deal with. So moving into the lighting, Paul Andres also walked the group through an overview of three different lighting level concepts and costs at the workshop. These lighting levels are primary, intermediate, and digital, and they all build upon one another. So the features that are included in the digital include those that are in the intermediate and primary, and the costs also build upon one another. The details behind all of these lighting levels, as well as some additional maintenance information, is included in attachment C of your packet, so I'm not going to go through all of that, but it is there for your reference, as you deem necessary. The architect and the lighting designer and staff all recommend the intermediate level of design, or level of lighting. This level provides all of the features of the primary level, including the LED lighting on the walkway, the tower eye or the needle hole, and the tower-based uplighting. The additional features that the intermediate level provides in addition to the primary is that the hanger cables, and I'll show you this on the next image, but the hanger cables would be lit, and they can be programmed to change colors. And also, the underside of the girders under the walkway would be lit as well. The intermediate level is estimated to cost approximately $728,000, which is $550,000 in addition to the primary. So these next few images are the same images that Paul Andres put up on the screen during the workshop. I'm showing these solely for purposes of illustrating the lighting, so please don't pay attention to the tower height. We haven't changed any of that. This is strictly taking a look at the lighting so that you can recall the difference between the primary lighting level and the intermediate lighting level. This first image is showing the primary level of lighting, so you can see the tower-based uplighting. The entire tower is lit, both from bottom and top. The eye of the needle is lit and highlighted, and then the walkway and the handrail is lit across the S shape. That is the primary level at 178,000. So as I flip between the primary, this is the intermediate, so going back to the primary, to the intermediate, you can see the big impactful difference is that those hanger cables, the vertical cables, become lit as a part of the intermediate package. And this image specifically shows the white lights. Whoops, I kind of merged. There's, I'm going to go straight. You can't really tell the difference on the screen between the white and the blue, but the hanger cables are lit, and those hanger cables, the lighting color can change, so red, green, blue, and you can do pink and any other color lighting, and then you can program those lights as well. So as I said, the entire team recommends moving forward with the intermediate lighting. So what does all of this mean in terms of the schedule and the budget? As far as the design budget goes, I mentioned previously that there's an additional cost of $150,000 to perform the additional design necessary for the increase in the tower height. Construction budget goes, we've spent a lot of time working with TY Lin team to refine the estimate the past couple of weeks as best as we can, based on 30% design. We would start with 19.6 million, which you see up on the screen, at 30%. That includes, referencing back to the workshop, that includes two construction seasons, the dampers that we talked about, which may come out as the design progresses, concrete piers, the base lighting, and then 9% contingency. I'm presenting the costs a little differently today, because I'm hoping that it'll be a little easier to understand in this manner, in comparison to how the consultants presented it before. There was a range, some variables, pluses and minuses. I hope this is a little more straightforward, but the numbers do look a little different. So the construction costs associated with increasing the tower height and the intermediate level of lighting, total 900,000, broken out by tower heights 350 for construction, intermediate level lighting is an additional 550. Those two numbers total to 900. And then, in terms of the accuracy of the estimate at this point, the estimates that we're sharing tonight are the best numbers that we have available to us at this point in design, which are 30% design. These are the best numbers that we've had to date, and they'll continue to become more refined and better as we proceed with design to 60%, 90%, and then ultimately, we'll receive bids, and that's when we'll know the true cost of the project. As we've been preparing for the upcoming CIP process, we've been discussing the amount of contingency that we feel comfortable with that would provide us with a conservative estimate, especially since we're at 30% design. For a common bridge, an everyday steel girder bridge that we build all over Dublin and all over the state, we would have historical bid information that we can rely upon, and we would typically include a 10% contingency. I believe 10% was even mentioned earlier this evening on another project. That's a pretty good rule of thumb to include at this point in the design. However, as we've discussed, this project is unique, it is complex, it is challenging. We don't have that historical bid information that we can rely upon, so we've been discussing, is 10% really adequate? There's a lot of unforeseeable factors that play into, or will play into, the cost and the schedule of this project, including material prices, the biggest one being steel. There's a lot of steel in this bridge, and steel prices go up and down, and that's difficult to forecast. The, there's unique bridge elements that there aren't that many fabricators in the country, much less the world, that produce the cables that'll be required for this bridge, the dampers. Availability of contractors, we discussed that at the workshop. Availability of contractors, especially with the experience necessary to build this bridge, more than likely, we will get some from far away that come to town to build this bridge. And then, even a more unpredictable factor is the competitive bidding environment when we actually bid the project. So it really depends what is all, what projects, what work is out there in the country to be bid, what work is on each of the contractors' plates at the time, as to how much, or how hard they'll take a look at this project, and what type of profit they'll include in their bid. So those are just some of the factors. So at this point, we're feeling that a conservative estimate should include 20% contingency. We currently have 9% contingency, and that was the designer backing into a budget number, and we're trying to take a good look at that so that we can get a better number as we continue on with the process. So taking all that into account, the total estimated construction cost at this point would be the 22.75 million number on the screen. Also, one thing I should mention about the contingency, as we do move forward with the design towards 60, towards 90%, we can reduce the amount of contingency that's in the project, because we will know more. You know, the more design you do, the more comfortable you feel with the design, and you just know more. You don't have to include as much contingency. So that's the budget. Moving on to schedule, the schedule up on the screen does take into account the additional design and the construction time that I walked you through on a previous slide for the increased tower height. What this means is we will potentially be bidding this project a few months later than anticipated into the spring, which means we will lose some of that construction season, and how that will play out during construction is difficult to tell at this point. But what it means is, at the end of the construction of the project, it may carry into the winter of '18, into the spring of 2019. But really, at this point, it's difficult to tell. We have the environmental permitting, which is a huge factor that'll play into schedule, and it's out of our, not entirely out of our control, but a lot of that process is out of our control, as we have to deal with federal agencies on getting those permits. Weather's out of our control, that's huge. And then also, steel availability really depends which fabricator is chosen, and what all's on their plates as to when that order's placed. So similar to the construction budget, as we proceed with design, we will continue to refine the schedule, and then, as we get closer to bidding, we'll, bidding, we will continue to refine all these numbers until we get to bid day. With that, I will turn it back over to Terry to conclude the presentation.
Thank you. So bottom line from both this analysis that we've done over the last week at your request, as well as just wanting to tie some loose ends together related to some infrastructure issues that we've brought before you over the last, really, previous months, and probably went into in most detail at your goal-setting session this year. With regard to the pedestrian bridge alignment, the landing plaza location, the span width that's always been there for the last year, the intermediate lighting package, as was presented to you, the increase in the bridge's tower above-deck height up to 110 feet, it's about the height of the new hotel, by the way, just to give you a feel for what that is, the new AC Hotel, and the design of all these should be moving forward, we think should be affirmed, because that's the basis on which we can give clear direction to our teams on this, on this subject, and would be consistent with the planning and design to date. With regard to North Riverview, again, we believe that needs to be affirmed as well, because we have advanced the design of that significantly. That's a project we indicated to you needed to move forward quickly because of the impacts on historic Dublin. If that alternate access route isn't there, access for the pedestrian bridge construction, as well as kind of other logistics, what will greatly reduce the impact on that area. as well as kind of other logistics, what will greatly reduce the impact on that area, it is the eventual road that goes through the park, and we did give you updated information tonight, and in fact, your supplemental appropriation included the dollars for its Similarly, related to this west area planning effort we talked about, because we have advanced so much with our negotiations with the school district and the library, they've approved the term sheets on those two projects. Those are totally based on the road system that we have laid out for you, as serving that area with Rockcrest, Franklin, and North Street surrounding those sites and the development of that site. There's a lot of design work that needs to continue to move forward. There's development agreements that need to be finalized based upon those, and we would like those to be affirmed as well. The need to advance the design and construction of the retaining wall, we touched base on this at briefly in goal-setting, and I'll give you a little more information on that shortly. If you recall, the plaza that will serve as the landing plaza for the pedestrian bridge on the west side has a retaining wall where the plaza will hit and the elevated pedestrian walkway will hit. And the importance of that getting in there is a timing perspective. With the needs and logistics for the pedestrian bridge construction, that plaza area up there will be an important place where that crane will locate. We want that elevator, that retaining wall to be out of the way. There's also a tremendous amount of construction moving forward between the building to the south of Crawford-Hoey, which will be coming before the city soon, as well as our need to advance the plaza itself eventually, and of course, a place to tie down the landing spot for the elevated walkway of the bridge location. Those who study the logistics of the construction here tell us that needs to be in a position to move forward. Again, those dollars are included with the supplemental appropriations that you acted on earlier this evening. Just for clarity here, this graphic shows you the location we're talking about in terms of that retaining wall. It's in effect where the elevated pedestrian walkway rests and where the plaza between the under-construction, Bridge Park West project and in the future, Bridge Park West-South project. This would be the interface between there. With this construction proceeding, all of this roadway proceeding, this getting finalized, pedestrian bridge being built, tremendous amount of activity, a lot of benefit from getting that out of the way. And again, just as a reminder to council, graphic we've shared a bit with regard to our discussions with the school district and library, the Rockcrest location just north of the new library, parking garage location, general alignment of Franklin, general alignment, obviously, of North Street, this piece here, we actually have to get dedicated, this roadway system around here, general orientation of these kind of facilities, because they are serving so much as the basis of kind of negotiations, it'll result in agreements being brought before council hopefully in August. We'd like those to be affirmed as well. And I think that summary of our requests, and these would be the items tonight that, as the takeaways, we'd hope to be in a position to get affirmed by council. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council questions?
I had asked for a few things when we had our work session. One was the height of the anticipated tree canopy that would remain after construction of the elevated walkway. I didn't see any of that information in here. The other thing I had asked for was dollars spent to date on this bridge of, where are we? What have we spent? What have we already sunk into?
That was included as an attachment. There should have been a summary there as one of your attachments. And if there wasn't, I have that graphic here. That should have been included as one of the attachments, what was spent to date. Is it included? B? Exhibit B. Shows you what's been contracted for and what's been spent to date. With regard to the tree canopy, we touched base with the designers, there's simply, there's not even a good sense yet of exactly which trees would be retained. Those are still being inventoried. The question of what trees get impacted by virtue of construction is still being assessed by the team in terms of what the construction impacts are, but you shouldn't assume that there's going to be a large, mature tree canopy there with the elevation of this. There will be a planting program put together. Trees that can and should be preserved will be and worked around, and then the planting program that you've seen conceptually on the park plans will move forward, but we simply don't have any more information than that today to advance what that number.
We don't have the height of the trees of?
The ones that'll be retained, no. They've been inventoried, now they're being assessed as to what can be retained and whatnot. We have asked the design team to move forward on those, but we don't have that information to share this evening.
And on this attachment B that you referenced, we don't have any information on any in-house numbers of dollars that we've spent on that. This is only?
Staff time? No, that's all third-party.
Exterior contracted.
Correct. That's all third-party expenses.
Okay. I think what my question was driving to was maybe a little bit more holistic number than what this attachment would represent, but the other thing, I know that there'd have been conversation among council about the construction of Rockcrest, and I think there was, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but there was some pause about building Rockcrest and perhaps staying away from the grounds of remembrance a little further and looking at, you know, how necessary that particular piece of roadway was. I still have, you know, a great amount of concern for that little, little piece of Rockcrest right here and getting in such close proximity to the grounds of remembrance and.
If I could, as part of the work session council held a year ago in spring, when we had MKSK come in and prepared a series of three-dimensional perspectives, part of the issue that was raised is we get Rockcrest as a right-of-way here. The deal with both the school district and library gives us this additional strip of land here, and what we have, what MKSK said would be needed, this elevation here is quite low, so you're actually, there's a cut in the hill where it's actually below grade at that point, and what we have MKSK preparing under their current contracts are those landscaping and/or other features that will mitigate that. That was identified very early on as something we wanted to pay special attention to, but a high level of confidence from the land planners and designers and MKSK that we'd be able to do that and mitigate it, and we've also been able to negotiate an additional third of an acre of land along that strip. So we're confident that we'll be able to do that and mitigate those impacts, and as that design comes forward with regard to that combination of landscaping or architectural features that are needed to further mitigate, we'll obviously bring those to council for consideration.
Teri, Rockcrest is really essential to the movement of traffic on that side of the river. You have the library with the, I don't know how many parking spaces there, and we've talked about how important that is to have that road network over there for the future.
It's a piece of your thoroughfare plan right now that you'd be amending your thoroughfare plan not to do it. It's an important part of the circulation.
We've even gotten involved in some other acquisitions recently nearby that would lend itself to that later as well.
I think just sheer serviceability to the parking garage off Rockcrest was a real critical component of that section, if nothing else, of that section.
If you remember, also, the circulation for the, for the key circulator in Bridge Street is Bridge Park Avenue becomes John Shields Parkway, then it comes back as Rockcrest. That's where the cycle tracks go. That's the roadway along the park that bounds the greenway. It is, again, as I said, an important roadway within your thoroughfare plan for this area. It's been adopted, and we think it's critical to make this circulation work well. Plus, we think it's good to move access points further north from this access point here, given its closeness to the 161 intersection. The traffic folks are suggesting that should improve things significantly by moving that further from the intersection, so we think it's an important roadway to move.
I don't disagree that you could put a greenway through there, but, you know, a lot of the rock face that you see along Dublin Road or High Street, as it changes to Dublin Road right in through here, I think we need to be, we need to think about that more carefully and need to be more sensitive in that area. That's, you know, that's a big part of our naturalized area and certainly a place of quiet reflection. We've put a lot of time and energy and certainly resources into the grounds of remembrance and to lay what you call a major thoroughfare adjacent to it. I don't know that that's necessarily the best place for that.
I think council has always had that concern about grounds of remembrance, and I'm wondering if, you know, we can get the rendering sooner. I mean, I'm prepared to support this this evening, but I think that getting the renderings and the current conditions, because there's quite a lot of vegetation between the library, that north part of the library and grounds of remembrance and where the entrance is off of Dublin Road, but if we can get that rendering and, you know, maybe, I don't know how they do the magical things with their computer and their drawings, but being able to visualize that better, I think would probably give us a lot of comfort.
Yeah, I think the, that's part of the reason that we advanced, MKSK, to go ahead and advance the design. The roads and the street systems now, I would say, are at about 30%. That's what we had to take it to just to be able to work with the various entities here on their designs of their roadway improvements, and we've kind of stopped them so that these efforts can catch up, and I think the planning of this area through here catching up is important. MKSK is a sub to EMHNT on the roadway designs, plus they're under separate contract with us specifically to come up with strategies to make sure that's mitigated. We can also provide some of those three-dimensional perspectives that they provided early on and back in late, or spring of 2015, when this was shared more broadly with council so you can kind of get a sense of what led to that.
I think the change of grade is going to mitigate a lot of that because you're going to be so far down. Matter of fact, it might add a little bit of dramatic effects to the ground of remembrance. I think Mike and I spent two years on that design committee, and was it three? Three years?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're not going to sacrifice anything for?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, that is something we talked about a lot and before, and I appreciate you bringing it up because it has to stay top of mind, that we are sensitive to that and aware of where we are in space.
So if I read attachment B correctly, we're about $3.5 million into the bridge?
I think that's contracted, most of the design money, I think it says spent to date, has not, you're 30% through the design, so the biggest contract there is for the design of the bridge itself, and I don't remember what the number it should have, we spent to date on there, it's a million something?
Right. Are those, these contracted numbers, numbers we could get out of, or is that?
I'm sorry.
We're committed to the contracted numbers?
Unless we would cancel the contract.
Okay.
You terminate the contract, but those are, yes, that is the amount we are contracted for the delivery of the full design of the bridge. That's the dollar amount that we spent. I think it's about a third of it roughly that we spent to date to get to 30% design.
I'd really like to see some of the tree canopy information. I think it's critically important. We have of our, what was going to be a suspension bridge, we have a portion of a suspension bridge, and then we have a 35% elevated walkway, and I think what happens around that elevated walkway is really important. If we have no tree canopy, I, if, I don't know if my memory is serving me entirely correct, but I believe the piers towards the easternmost edge of the raised walkway were approximately 50 feet tall.
The piers?
Coming out of the ground.
What that number?
So I, you know, I'm?
I don't think they're that tall there. I think the, from the top of the pedestrian deck to the, where the biggest pier hits ground, which is the low point, is 49 feet, so I'd have to think everything's less than that as you start to come up the hillside.
Right, so 50 feet, and the easternmost portion of the raised walkway would be the tallest, and then they would get shorter as they moved to the west. So I have some concern about the feel of an elevated walkway and how the transition happens from being just on a elevated walkway with nothing overhead into a suspension bridge where you start, begin to have cables and things. I'd really like to see some detail on how that transition happens, how that feels. You know, we, when we started this in, in 2014, the, the estimate was $12 million, and we're two years later and nearly double. I just want to make sure that, you know, by the time we get across the finish line, that we have something that, that feels as significant as the investment we made in it.
Yeah, I think just one final point with regard to the, the canopy itself, obviously, there's nothing about that, there is no way to lengthen the span of the suspension bridge. We don't think there's any other Plan B landing point, so I think the burden on us is to make sure we do as good a job landscaping and preserving trees as we can there. We don't think there's an alternate route or alternate way to do that. We just need to plan it well, try to mitigate as best we can, and create as accurate a picture as we can of what the after condition is. I think our designers who have looked at this think it'll be an extraordinary experience as you extend through there. Does it mean you'll have a full bloom of mature trees creating a canopy around that or even a suspension? I don't think that will be the case, but we can certainly, as that planning advances, share that information.
So I was in some of the northern suburbs of Chicago last week, and they have installed planters on their overpasses, and it really softened the feel, excuse me, softened the feel of many of those overpasses, just having, you know, they had trees in their planters, shrubs, and of course, this time of year, there were flower installations and things, you know, and maybe we need to think about what amenities we need to add to this raised sidewalk portion to make it feel softer so that you're not just walking across an elevated sidewalk. I think we're going to have to get creative because it's, it's a long walk. It's, what is it, 250 feet or more of just the raised sidewalk portion?
To be clear, the, as opposed to raised sidewalk, it is the exact same profile in terms of the rail systems, the appearance of the structure underneath, and in all respects but for the cables themselves.
Except for the overhead, yeah.
But everything else about it has the exact same appearance of what you're walking.
Right. From four feet down, it's the same, and from four feet up, it's very different.
Yep.
My only issue with the bridge since our last, since the work session, was the height of the tower.
Yes.
I guess I did not appreciate, and I know that it's in here, the dates when the tower was reduced and the changes were made, I didn't appreciate what visually that was the impact that that was going to have. The visual that you guys put up at the, at the work session, for some reason, I'm picturing it, it was almost, it was like a brown in color thing, and it highlighted the difference between the two. That was the first time that I appreciated the significance, and when John pointed out, that has a totally different feel.
Yep.
I agree, that it looked more like straight wires instead of like sail kind of thing. So for me, it's more of returning to what originally was as opposed to raising the height of this tower. And, you know, this is a significant investment by this community to build this bridge, and for, for many of the people in this room, it will be the mark that is left on Dublin from this project, so we've got to get it right, and I'm willing to support going back to what the original concept was because I think that was right. We only get, I mean, could you imagine if we built this bridge and everybody said, "Well, if only it were 38 feet taller"? You know, I don't want to be in that position, but I'm very, very mindful of the, of the money that's coming out of the city's budget to build this bridge, and so I just want to make it clear, at least from my perspective, I'm returning to what I thought it always was, as opposed to deciding now at this late hour, I'm going to add on a few more bells and whistles. So that's the only thing that, about the bridge that was significant to me, and I support everything else that you guys have in the?
Yeah, Teri, I think that, I think you're absolutely right. The difference between the suspension portion and this part that's undersupervised, you're not going to notice it. It's going to be a pretty dramatic walkway across that river, and I agree with the mayor. I said, I want to thank you guys for, one, coming back with a modified version of this with the added height that's, I think, going to make the thing iconic in the entire region, and two, for coming back with the construction schedule, which didn't look as onerous as it was presented at the last meeting, so I think we all appreciate that and doing it that fast. Thank you.
Dana?
Yeah, I would like to just talk a little bit about the $12 million that I've heard come up a couple times. You know, I really believe that when this project started in its earliest conception, a true plug number of $12 million was programmed. We really didn't know what we didn't know. We knew that we would be designing and going down this path. There's probably no doubt that I could tell you at staff discussions, because I've been in on them for several years, we fully anticipated that number was going to go up along the way. I mean, I could have plugged a $30 million number and come in and been a hero and said, "Hey, it's only a $22 million bridge", but the reality of it is, you don't know what you don't know. And we started, that was probably benchmarked off probably Greenville or something like that as a starting out of the blocks. You can see each year how we increased that budget over time as design and modifications were made. I don't think that anyone, I tell you at staff level, and I believe at some of the conversations with council over the years, I think you all, for those of you who have been here, know that that number was elevating over time as you got closer and down the road with design, and I don't think that it's a surprise to any of us, anyway, that's been intricately involved with this discussion, to know that that, this bridge cost was going to elevate quite a bit. So, you know, the good news is, you know what you know, we're at 30%. A 30% is a great check-in. Had I been, and I apologize if I wasn't here at the workshop, had I been here, I would have made sure to point out that a 30% design is an industry standard at which we would check in, and an iconic project like this? check in, and an iconic project like this, we would check in with council. You know, I don't bring in shared-use path designs, culvert designs, I don't bring in intersection designs, roundabout designs, building designs, floor plan designs, but if you look over recent years, some of the major projects, if you look at Riverside Drive 161, I think we brought you a total of 13 options you assessed and chose. At one point, we brought in the 270-33 interchange and the art form that will go with that, public artwork to a degree, although you're not a jury, you check in on those at times. So, there are those iconic projects that are out of the norm that you don't know, there's just things you don't know until you get down the design phase. So, we will continue to check in with you, probably unlike we do with a lot of other projects because this one is so unique. So, I just wanted to point out that that history of where we started and where we are, I don't think if I look at the council members who have been here and involved with that since day one, particularly at staff level, that that's any surprise to us. I just wanted to make sure the public heard that on behalf of staff, and I think we've tried to keep you informed of that along the way. Thank you.
You know what, really, Dana, you know, when that number came out, I saw that solely as a placeholder because of all the other construction we were doing with the state on 161, the traffic circle. But I got to applaud you because that night I said, "You know, this thing's going to be between 20 and 30 million," and you've kept it down at the low end. So, you've really done well.
Dana, just so you know where I'm coming from, I'll hand this off to you. It's a fact check off of the city's webpage, and it was, the footbridge was going to cost 18 million. True or false, says false, that it lists 12 million. So, I just want you to know the source of where the $12 million number came from in my mind.
And I don't mean to sound in any way argumentative or in any way lecturing anyone. I just know where we began and how we've gotten to where we are, and I just don't want anyone to construe that as all of a sudden, we got a bridge that's twice as much. I just think that's a little bit unfair to the process, and if anyone felt that way, I'm not suggesting people do, but if they do, but I do think we've had, you know, eyes on and awareness in this process all the way through, and until you get to the design of these really hard, complex projects, you don't know what you don't know. Now we know, and we're putting that information out there, so.
And I'm not sure how we could have estimated the lighting, for example. I mean, I don't, you know, three years ago or however long ago, you know, when we started out, you know, but these are options I think that are worth considering, you know, and, you know, they're not insignificant numbers, but I think that, you know, it's important for us to consider, and, you know, we're about to make a choice, I think.
Well, and I think, just one more thing if I could, I think we're wearing you all out with decisions. I mean, as far as check-in, 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 but we're probably like, I won't say overdoing it, but doing it a lot because we want to make sure we're checking in with you along the way. You can choose to pull that plug anywhere along the way that you want if it gets to a point that you don't want to do it, but we'll put these placeholders in the budget. You'll see this in the capital budget. I believe in our dialogue, we feel we have the capacity to do that as a city, and, you know, we'll certainly show that, you know, when we come back with the capital budget in August.
Well, I appreciate it, and I would echo John's sentiments with respect to staff and, you know, my thanks, all of our thanks, I think, you know, for turning this around so quickly. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, Dana, let me be clear, especially since I'm new on council, I appreciate the check-ins. The exhaustion you're seeing on our faces is just due to the late hour.
Well, and it's the history lesson, and I keep, we keep, and I don't, you know, I think it's good for the public to hear that and be reminded of how long of a process this has been and all the various check-ins, so I didn't mean to bore everybody with history lesson, but that's something that I think...
No, I think it's really appreciated. So, I have a question on this affirmation business here. So, if there was any, these are just affirming our overall general directions on these things, so there's plenty of opportunity to change a direction at some point along the way. Is that right?
You say change a direction. What we're...
Yeah, so like, for example, I know there's some concerns around Rockcrest. You know, you said you can bring back some other drawings or computer graphics or what have you to give us some confidence in the direction that we're heading, but what happens if it comes back to us and we're like, "Yeah, now we have really no confidence. It's way too close to the grounds of remembrance." Is there opportunity for us to change that direction?
I think it's...
Even if we're reaffirming our general direction now? That's kind of what I'm asking. I don't want to be locked into something.
Sure. With the presentation, just to give you a little background on that one issue, the presentation we gave to council in 2015, when we think we affirmed that roadway network, the direction we were given is move Rockcrest as far south as you can move it and still leave a reasonable building pad and appropriate distance between the intersections there. So, we worked with Fred and others who were intimately involved, and that roadway location, we came from Fred and others that he reached out to saying, "I'm confident that we can do what we need to do to mitigate any kind of impacts and make sure that we don't negatively impact that area." So, locationally, you know, like I said, it's 30% designed, we're working on finalizing agreements with parties that want to move forward with projects. I think where the flexibility comes in is what do you do with the landscaping? The architect, when he gave the presentation last year, said maybe even something architectural there makes sense to help mitigate that further. So, I think those notions of what it takes to make sure that that location and placement, which we think is as far south as it can reasonably go, gets impacted, but we'll be going from 30 design, and I think what Dana was mentioning before, these things are moving very fast towards getting designed and being constructed on them. The elements of finishes and landscaping and those kind of mitigating measures, absolutely open, but we need affirmation on these projects so we can finalize agreements, or we have to go back and renegotiate agreements with folks on this and kind of stop design on some key elements there.
You guys are memorializing the CIP process as well. I mean, that's a big part of what's coming up here in August, that will all be in finance committee, the whole to go through.
Yeah.
So, that's a big deal. And to be clear, this council's not stuck into anything ever to the extent you can count to four or more, and so, I think, you know, at least that's the way I view it.
You know, one other thing, too, I got to compliment the staff on, you know, the people designing this bridge from San Francisco have a really great reputation, and this is really a complicated structure, and the idea of an S-curve suspension bridge, the way this is laid out, is no easy task. So, anybody that thinks that this thing's going to be an inexpensive bridge is absolutely crazy. This thing's a very complicated piece of art that's going to be something that people are probably going to talk about forever in our area. And I looked at downtown Columbus when they did their bridge and all the controversy over it for the mayor that just got out of there, and it was very interesting, and now every photograph of downtown Columbus includes that bridge because it's a pretty good-looking bridge. And really, we're shooting for that kind of iconographic symbol for our city. So, you know, it is what it is, and I don't think there's any real big surprises for any of us that know anything about construction. Thank you.
All right, is it, this is a mouthful, all four of these. Can we just do them individually quickly?
Why would we just do one motion?
Just one motion?
Yeah, we, staff gets direction on this. They need affirmation that this is the direction we want to go in because if we don't...